We're live. Wait, thank you. For the work session, wanted to give you opportunity to engage in and look at some student performance and achievement data. And to that end, I've just passed out a physical copy of the thought capture that we used, but then also want to kind of explain real quickly the data sets that I gave you to look through. And then how I'll kind of use the thought capture to guide a conversation. Giving you three things. One, and in order as they go on board docs, I believe, is my annual data summary. She's about seven or eight pages long, includes a lot of different pieces of information, both some standardized testing results, attendance information, graduation rates. A key thing there with all the different data points is that it doesn't give like any comparative data to like prior performance. So I also gave you last year's report. So if you wanted to look at one of the measures and go, how'd that compare to last year? Look between the two, also notice this here, I put in some graphs to help kind of with some of the visuals. Working on that, like that's a little bit better ability to tell stories rather than the kind of numbers and charts that that I tend to work with. The other data set that I gave you, and I think it's the the third one in order on board docs, takes a look at achievement and growth indicators from the system of school success. And these are built off of our AK star assessment. But it has a little bit of tweaks to the data set, and the big one is that it looks at students that are enrolled at our schools or at any of the schools, the state average on October 1st and at the testing with them. And so the idea is that these are like the those indicators, these are students that were at that school for the year. They received instruction at that year. It's not a student that like transferred in right before the assessment, whereas include any information somebody transferred right now. You know, I just like that it's a little kind of tease out to the data for us and just kind of, these are the kids we taught them. That's kind of one reason why I like that. And they refer to a student like that as full academic year. There's kind of a weird aspect on the state achievement that because this is kind of the system that it's designed for, the actual state average that is reported out in this system reduces the achievement score because the statewide participation rate in the assessment is less than ninety percent. So on that data set, there's a third column in green that I undid the math. I reversed the reduction in the score for that comparison. And so that's more of a true comparison to the state ignoring like this weird calculation that they do based on participation. Just a couple of things and those are kind of the data sets that I put on front, you just, and really the intention is to give you time to look at that. And what I'd like you to do is we'll take maybe 10 minutes and I'll look through it, whatever kind of grabs your eye or has your thoughts. And as you're looking through, I'd like you to take some notes on things that you're like, hey, that that feels good. That's a celebration. There might be some things that you're just like, hey, that's interesting. I don't know what story it may or may not tell. But it's just kind of interesting to me. And then also ones that go like, oh, this feels like there's some room to grow there. And I'd like to give you some time to kind of jot those down. Also want you to be thinking about what would be kind of like the key thing that you might want to share out or talk about in terms of celebration? Hey, that's interesting or yeah, it looks like there's some room to grow. The three different ways to look and again, identify different things, but then also be thinking about what's one that you might want to elevate into a conversation? As you're kind of looking at things, I'll also float around. If you have technical questions, if you're asking, what's this thing measure or what are you talking about with that participation thing? I'll come over and credit and help you with that while the others are working. Before you go, what questions do you have?
What did you say for time?
Probably 10 minutes, I'll kind of watch and see if you're really engaged with my goal a little longer, still make sure that we have time to discuss that.
And are we just working on the?
You get to pick whatever data sets you want to look at.
Oh.
That we provide, like those ones, look at, look at those, whatever page, whatever color you want to look at. You do you. A lot of times we are small schools. Like they're you're right, no math largely because like you live in a collaborative kids who could have a pattern or something such. It's suppressed for data privacy. Interesting. I find it interesting that again, for the involvement that it was reasonable in that situation.
Well, that's what I'm saying that that I think camera has zero, Anderson has one. So I would have said that.
But right, it's, it's like, you can show us the
It's not, and they're both a hundred percent participation.
Right, but the overall, it's the
The number.
The number and the pattern of of the swan. And they apply those rules anytime. So like when you look at this year's school level, the tri valley, almost every grade level is suppressed. And it's, I look at them. I looked at the actual numbers though, what's wrong with that? And I don't, I can't understand like the specific rule, but it's being applied because of class. One class was a third, 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 different category. It doesn't tell me anything. Something about that trigger. Yeah. Or if there were thirty kids, me. You don't see fucking. We even need the AK star release that data that was published. So this is not the twenty five spring assessment, it's the twenty seven. Only down. The, the system is designed as score and kind of separate different schools specifically identified by percentage. And so the and because the county is so small. They have the numerical system that they figure out. But despite its whole algorithm doesn't work, so they took out the small schools and put it into the small school review. Or people are familiar with the Yeah, it's a measure that says, at the end of the and I've reported up because it is one of kind of like the classic success criteria, because it's a great indicator. It's like are you on track in your first year in high school? At least you want that number to be on. The present of
Is this like a the student is attending?
No, like on average Anderson, like on any given day. Ninety percent of students will be at Anderson's home.
Okay, and then this is number of days with the with the ninety percent.
Yeah. Got it.
Like other stuff we've talked about.
Maybe that goes in your interesting call. Six, three, so I'm going to do a check in. We're looking at that and we're comfortable with some celebrations we might discuss, some kind of huh wonders. And something like, hey, there's might be some growth. There is. You got twenty three minutes to talk about Tuesday.
Want to start with one column first?
Yeah.
Julius, I'll say our celebrations.
Sure.
Sure, oh, you're only going to be, great idea, okay. Um, wow, I could really elaborate on this. I guess when I wrote our numbers overall look strong, I was looking at the, um, okay, so I was focused on the twenty four, twenty five Denali Borough School District data summary, and I do apologize, I had a small work urgent thing pop up, so do not spend too much time on this, but looking at the, like the star and participation rates and the that general assessment, state assessment stuff, I have said that our numbers look really strong. Maybe I'm saying that because I'm looking at the comparison of the state. And then was trying to kind of wrap my head around understanding this growth. This growth indicator and seeing those numbers between fifty and sixty.
Just one celebration?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, make sure the, okay. The thing that I really wanted to celebrate was I was so excited to see that we had significant growth in our map above the state average, so we went from thirty nine percent to sixty two, and I thought that was just fantastic.
Overall, the, the state of Alaska, I'm not sure. That's, that's point of celebration for us, but overall, it's not, not great news, but in particular the growth.
Thank you. Yeah, so, uh, the yeah, growth indicator. Making sure that, you know, from year to year, we're getting better because that's, that's how I look at it. I'm like, it's great that we're our scores are better than a state. But the number that our scores are doing, don't look great. And maybe that's the kind of tests or the whatever, I don't know, but looking at forties, fifties, those are exciting to, to be like, yay.
Might show up and talk about our opportunities for growth.
Yeah, but, but it's, it's good to see that from year to year, we have over fifty percent improvement. Uh, like over fifty percent are improving, so that's good.
Jump to, maybe kind of Boris, you kind of shared a little bit of like the, the room for growth. And maybe if you want to elaborate on that, we'll kind of come back down the, the table to Lauren. Again, reidentify what is some of your reasons, like sees growth opportunities.
I mean, that, that one is there, but the one that I actually that I wrote down, um, and this is a little bit from personal experience and also from looking at the numbers. We have, you know, like sixteen, seventeen percent participation from peak in AK star. Um, so it's really hard to really know and, and see what, uh, peak as a whole would be represented as. Um, and it'd be opportunities there for peak students to do it, but I feel like it's not very well advertised and easy to understand when and where and how, all that stuff. I've been a homeschool parent last year wanting to do it, so I think that that participation rate could come up a little bit, might form us a little better on homeschooling system.
The tri valley, um, kind of gaps into rate didn't seem to move from one year to the other. I'm sorry, miss.
Well, I was thinking about that, but last year was the really big emphasis, right? And so we're not seeing last year's.
For the attendance you are.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't the, um. Lauren, you're not so bad at Christmas.
Yeah, it was interesting for us to, I also wrote down the same thing. Um, I'm, I'm not aware of the, the advertising for peak. Um, I was kind of thinking like when I talked to homeschool families that there's not always a desire to participate in some of those things as well. And so I feel the same, like, I can understand that choice that they want to make as they're trying to do alternative kind of schooling for their kids and not pigeonhole that mindset of like, that's all, you know, you're gauging their achievement on, but I think for the purpose of like knowing how effective we're being, it would be great if we had better better participation to know how that pro, how that program's running in comparison to our brick and mortar schools and so.
Kristen, area of growth for you?
For me, and I guess I was looking at the growth of one academic year and For me, and I guess I was looking at the growth of one academic year, and, um, well, I felt like, you know, fifty six and sixty five percent in math and P O A, those were some, some good numbers, um. I would love to see all of our students, I mean, I know we're not maybe going to get to a hundred percent, but, you know, seeing more of them really advance in a whole grade year. And I think that's really nitpicky, but, I mean, I mean, overall, I would really love to see more in the L A growth opportunity, so.
Before I ask you the same question, I kind of get the, uh, huh, from all of you, do you want to mention a couple of things on some of the data points that you shared? Uh, Lauren and Forrest touched on peak participation rate, again, you're looking at the, uh, spring of twenty four. I can say that for a spring of twenty five, the dynamic participation rate increased to a hundred percent. We're at thirty two.
That's still, that's big.
Again, it's one of those, if you look at the absolute number, like, uh, you're talking a little bit about also about like your achievement level, comparison grade, absolute value, you're like, hey, there's, there's a lot of kids that are, are not at that ratio level, kind of like, look at thirty two percent participation rate, and it's like, I still can't really make a comment about peak as a program based on this data set, but I can say it increased about a hundred percent.
You know, and I have to say, my experience, I've had it was a semester with cord, with Cordell in, um, peak program, I felt like that was very, very well communicated as far as taking the test, or maybe that was just the advisor that we were assigned to, that communicated that, um, yeah, I, I guess I thought that was pretty well communicated, at least with the advisor that we had, I don't know if that came from Karen, or I don't know if that came from the actual teacher, but I felt like that was very well communicated and easy to organize. It would've been really easy if you could have just taken that with Tri Valley students, but I had to understand why that was.
It's like, like, from the outside, like, you know, like, I get why you're like, why not, and it's like, from the inside, it's like, it is a logistical nightmare.
Yeah, here's the half for me, so I thought, oh, it should be. That's fine, so, yeah, that's, that's exciting.
On the chronic absenteeism, again, yeah, that is flat. Though if you look at the other chart that shows regular attendance, we see movement in the Tri Valley.
So regular attendance, we have more than ninety percent, but we still have some students, some of them.
Regular attendance is, that's on, that's, the president's school on ninety five, ninety five percent.
Yeah, which that was actually my celebration thing, I mean, I guess it's all about perspective on how you interpret data, but I thought a hundred and five days at Tri Valley, we had ninety percent attendance, or higher, I guess. And I'm like, that's why I asked, like, okay, how many days, I know I should just know a lot off the top of my head, but I needed to make sure I knew, but, I mean, I thought that was, that was pretty fantastic, so, I mean, I guess that's, I was celebrating a hundred and five out of a hundred and seventy days, um, which I thought was, was significant, um, at least if they had ninety percent.
It was the same as, as twenty four. I, I, I just think it's stickier, it's, you know, to, to, to decrease the chronic absenteeism and you know, really make a difference and increase in the attendance at Tri Valley, you just have to, um, many variables, so.
You know, I do think that it's interesting that, I mean, may, I know you said this to, that's to in, in another meeting, and I think maybe you sort of said it here, but that, um, if, if your school misses, if you're in that chronic or whatever absenteeism, you're, they actually decrease your test scores?
In this one system, uh, again, in the system of school success, where I pulled that achievement and growth indicator, that system is designed to, for the state to be able to comply with the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which requires us as a state to identify the bottom five percent of performing schools and offer those schools additional support, as well as identifying schools that, uh, might be, um, underserving, traditionally underserved populations, and so they looked at and designed a system that includes several different measures of achievement. And they looked at academic achievement, academic growth, absenteeism, graduation rates. Um, they presented, might include, presented grade nine kids on target, uh, if you're, if your school is third grade, your, uh, percent proficiency, reading in grade three, and English language learner growth and proficiency. So they use, and they use like just kind of some mathematical stuff, kind of shove these all together, and put that all together, and one of the expectations from the federal government is that the state will have ninety five percent participation in the statewide assessment. State of Alaska, if we remember, has a state law that says, parent cannot open their child out of any state assessment. So it's kind of like, how does the state, what's one thing the state can do to help make sure that districts and schools, right, encouraging people to participate, is they say, we're gonna lower this score if you don't, at ninety five percent. That's where that comes from, and it's just, it impacts that data set and the like that otherwise has full academic year students, which I always go, I'm always curious about, the kids that we worked with, what did we do? If someone shows up the day before the assessment, and they're brilliant, my score that year will look good, I didn't have hair to do it.
Um, so, isn't, is the maps in, um, March?
Yeah, this spring assessment would be during March.
They squeeze a little bit more in there, like April and February, January.
That's when the winter is, and that's again, winter of state, that's also kind of like winter around the country for the, kind of, for the assessment. What were some of the areas that you're like, hey, this caught my eye, I don't know if it's like, I'm, I'm happy about it, or sad about it, just like, it just made, makes me sit and wonder, almost starting to meditate on dawn.
There's a decrease in the number of I P's in between twenty four and twenty five. When, were the numbers that were reasonably, was, in the number of students? Seven forty five in twenty twenty four, and eight fifty four, so hundreds more.
Though we also have twenty more students with I P's and.
I have that reversed, a hundred and one students had an I P in twenty twenty five versus a eight. Okay, I thought it was a reverse. Which didn't make sense if they're higher.
Kristen?
Um, my thing of interest was, it looks like in twenty, uh, maybe I'm gonna have my data wrong too, so I don't, but this is what I feel like I saw, I feel like we had this, this really great growth in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and then it was, it was slightly less in twenty twenty four for both math, I mean, for math and for, um, E L A. Wasn't quite as strong in math, but well, E L A, and I, and, and, and so, I just thought that was interesting, you know, like, we have this growth and then.
Are you looking at page two, the achievement indicator?
Then I'm not reading that right, then.
Well, just.
That's, that is exactly the one I'm looking at.
Achieve.
Achievement.
Achievement. Growth, I didn't explain.
So, okay, achievement indicator.
And growth is a full academic year student, who also took the test somewhere last year, was with us this year, and took the test in the spring, that's through their measure, that growth measure.
So I guess it was the achievement indicator, and so, um, anyway, I thought that was interesting, it wasn't a critique, it was more just an interesting observation for, for me. Whereas it looks like, the, I mean, kind of with the state of Alaska or the five fifty vibes, I mean, it almost looks like they say pretty inconsistent, and it looks like we just, and is that, well, is that due to such high success, you know, that they were already up here, so it was their achievement possibility less because they had already achieved higher, maybe that's more growth than it was achieved.
I don't know. Yeah, that's a good observation, in terms of like, hmm. Reducing that, greater fluctuation in our scores, again, from twenty three to twenty, twenty three to twenty four year. Lauren?
Well, we've already delved into this topic, but I just found that, um, uh, attendance uh, data really interesting, and originally, the first kind of couple sets, I was like, oh, this seems like it's better, right, than ninety percent, um, kind of what you mentioned, like, over a hundred days of over ninety percent seems like really, really great, um, versus other conversations, and then I kind of kept moving through, and you see the breakdown of chronic versus, you know, on track and that sort of thing, and, um, so just with that, that being on the forefront, um, of our minds and part of our goals and stuff, I just found that, that data really interesting and, um, engaging, and would, would kind of look at it in different ways to, maybe not just numbers, but like visual to, um, kind of try to understand that better, but it does sometimes feel like a weird conversation to have, because with Dawn, so there's some variables, it's mostly, you feel like it's cat chasing the channel, but.
Or obscure, hey, that's interesting. Yeah, so, I'd sneak to it because we're both on the same chart, but what? So this, this is the page three, um, and it's the achievement indicator and growth indicators, uh, for, for the achievement, um, our peak and, and Tri Valley have higher math scores than English language arts, which seems to be kind of a flat, um, statement, which is interesting, so it looks like we're really doing better in that, um, than, you know, uh, the same with English and English, so that's cool, um, but it's interesting, and then the other thing was just kind of the, again, looking at, looking at the percentages, you know, when we're looking at achievement being in the forty six to fifty three, um, percent there in Tri Valley, uh, what's the, I, I would be interested to see other schools, you know, because we see the state of Alaska down here, us up there, up here, it'd just be interesting to see, is, is this one hundred percent absolutely unattainable, do other schools fall in the eighties, you know, no, it should be interesting.
I actually saw that recently, um, and I should have ten notes to speak about in the meeting. Um, I can share, since I was talking, I'll share now, the department, I was in a meeting with the department, and they actually showed us that we laid it out on a district level, what our achievement was from lowest times, and I did a quick screenshot, and I, and I think they said, hey, we're not gonna send this out, because it looks really bad if you're on that side. They said it is all public information, because you could go to the state website, just look up each district one at a time, write it down, and make your own chart, so it wasn't private information. And I looked at that, I don't, you know, so be, uh, uh, but then I also looked, I said, we're over on like that strong side, like, maybe English, English arts was like twelfth, and like math is seventh, and I'm like, that feels good, then I remembered, you know what? Those students in Denali Peak who take the assessment lower are district average compared to our Brooklyn Moore students. So I said, I can do that math real quick, and really look at, anchor around, look at what that Tri Valley score is, and again, pull out the Denali Peak, and consider a little bit real quick, kind of the Anderson Campbell, so there's a little bit of rough math going. And I go, oh, I pull out the Denali Peak, and I say, our breaking order, we have this large control over, we should weigh out, and then I go, wait a minute, that district that's above us, they've got a really big correspondence program. I'm gonna look at the scores of their correspondence program in their local city school, and when I pulled out their correspondence, like, that's just their city school, they went way down, to the point that English language yards, um, feel pretty calm, maybe the second, right, working more or something.
I'm, I'm kind of having to change my, the way I look at some of these numbers in those thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent, and go, we're standing on a, on a field, we're all throwing shot put, and the hundred percent is where the Olympic line is, you know, and of course, our high schoolers aren't gonna hit the Olympic line, you know, they're, they're not gonna have their master degree with education, hitting that hundred percent, that's what it feels like.
And somebody.
I don't, I don't want to take down our.
And it's interesting, a, a long time ago, the state had, uh, uh, an assessment called the graduation, high school graduation hall, flying exam. I don't know if you remember having to take that, but.
Um, that, that was really good at testing, when I didn't know.
There, there was like a summit of his test, uh, test, and this was one of them, and they took it away, because they were like, well, ninety eight percent of the people pass, so it doesn't really mean anything, and the two or three percent that don't are just being just destroyed by the fact that they cannot make a test, even though they brought through all the courses and, and everything, so they eliminated, and at the same time, he assessed the statewide, some of the assessments that was in place for the other grade levels, they're showing about like an eighty percent achievement rate, and people said, well, that's not right. Like, that doesn't, like, we're not that good. And so in the, like, the last decade, as they were doing, and they kind of redesigned the assessments for a period of time, they kept trying to, um, adjust what that kind of cut score was, and also to try to make it feel more commensurate with, with data that would come out every couple of years from the National Assessment of Education Progress, just sampling students in every state, and kind of shows that our, our, and, and just like the yard scores are not strong in this state compared to the state, to the country, and, and so, having a state standard assessment that said eighty percent of their kids are getting it, when that kind of that national report card's going. But that, so it's, it's like, I think you're right in terms of like, yeah, that line, that a hundred percent's way over there, and they set this because you probably want to be, definitely as a state, above like a hundred and thirty percent. Definitely often, and that's why, again, our state compares it as national. Math, uh, when I do that, again, kind of that same process and kind of move things around, I put it on one of the boards or things in the state, it was interesting in math, the districts at the top were pretty, it was pretty, it's just this kind of straight line, little, little jumps. The English language arts, there was one district that very good, that was, up above, and I've seen that chart before, and they were there. Yes.
And building. Generally, they run that same situation.
And similar district in terms of small size, very well resourced, they get full contribution, they get money outside the cap, you know, small community, um, lots of, again, uh, relationship connections, there is, uh, because the tourist industry there is, let's say, you know, generally more wealthy area, and so again, that just provides assets to families that we know provide protective factors, the benefits to kids, uh, then we kind of look at them just from the outside, I go, there's a lot of good things there that we also have, but then, yeah, maybe there's something real special that, that's some, you know, this is grades two, three, nine that are being tested, so I've seen this a couple of times, but it's like, who's that?
Well, even if it's a high school teacher who's got, who's bringing kids to this higher expectation, you know, that, like, other teachers are probably picking up on that.
Especially, as you said that, you know, that's that three, 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 nine, you know, have access, you know, to it, but are they being brought up because, um, you know, you just, you never know, but I mean, that, that is very, very interesting to me, like, what, what, what are they doing for that, I mean, I, I would never want to discourage anything that we do here at the school with our teachers, like, that's not what I'm trying to do, but it makes me wonder, like, what are they doing because they're, I mean, that, that's significant.
It's significant, if it's like sixty five percent of their students are advanced or proficient, English language yards, you're sitting at a one fifty percent, it's like,
you know, what are you doing?
That's fifteen percent higher than us, that's a big difference.
You just think, you know, whatever you celebrate as a community and invest in, and you know, like that, those are what those students and teachers see. You know, like that, those are what those students and teachers see. And if it's dominating, that's like. And it's a very small school, that's what you you bring the statewide tournaments to your school, like. I mean, like sad as a judge in one, even though I. There's not a rubber going to fill out, but it's celebrated. That's great. And programs that we don't have or badly because our school, like, you know, debate. Having it's a brand speaking.
One of the the work sessions, maybe time kind of like to make sure you're kind of looking at that and thinking about it, trying to do kinds of that. There is some work. Giving yourselves both individually and collectively, kind of like, what are things that we want to? Keep, keep in our minds in terms of either again, structural decisions, governance decisions that you make. And also that ability to just build that background knowledge, so you go like, oh, why are we hearing about this? Why is this a focus or? Okay, if that's a focus this year, when another more data comes out, I know what I want to look for. So when I compare it to something. And maybe I need to dig up last year's report so I can do that, or like, what's those couple data things that you're going to go? That one seemed to speak to me for some reason, so I'm going to go with that. I want to look at that and I want to be able to acknowledge things that I can say adhesive successes. And at the same time, going like, and we saw him grow. Because AK Star is like a great story and it's like one of these like. We don't remember.
Yeah, somebody wondered in all of that. But I probably want you to definitely not remember, because that's where my mind is, but. I wrote down, are there E L A growth years? And could we provide additional targeted learning? I mean, that's not something that I necessarily know. I'm not a teacher. Um but I wonder if there are some very formative E L A growth years. And could we provide, and if there are, could we provide additional targeted? Learning or resources?
Your growth years generally are earlier, as you're saying, strong complications. Um it's interesting with the Alaska Read Act, some of the state level data that I've seen, I didn't share this, it's kind of long use of those. But I think it's true, this when we're looking at a state level, the percentage of students in our early grades. Especially like K one and two with this M class assessment we do there. Seeing increase in students. In those early grades that are proficient in those early literacy skills. And I was specifically looking and tracking the cohort in the last year, or coming around the year before. The first grade last year to try to say like, okay, if they have this big intervention year, Alaska Read that, and they finish the year. And with a much more higher efficiency rate than the national average, that's the question, how did they start the first spring? Because there's learning loss that happens naturally over the summer time. So how much of that kind of comes in? What kind of bump do we see from all that intervention? Did the same thing, grade one, all that intervention work, how's that carry with the start of grade two? And it's one of those things, it's interesting, you look at the absolute numbers and you're like, wow. But when you do the comparison, do the start of grade one or start of grade two year before, you go. Hey, that's a couple percentage points high. And if you're looking at about a thirty percent proficiency rate, it's like three percentage points higher, you're like. Oh, wait a minute, that was a ten percent. Build on that this next year, and the next year, and the next year, and see how that translates out. That when we look at the tightly at the comparison, it's again, the state level, but the interventions that we're also doing here seem to be working. But it's also is a very long term thing, like when the state of Mississippi really invested in reading both the structural focuses. And then a lot of resourcing, reading one that went into it, um it took like ten years to really. It is a long term thing, it requires long term investment, long term, kind of the disabilities of both local levels, state levels. And the, you know, those indicators, those wonky ones that I like, they'll come out in October, the current AK Star is public information now, parents basically.
I think about five minutes, leaving at five out of five starts and start a little bit late. Looks like the students, seniors are passing.
I don't know, I haven't, I haven't come to a tournament.
Oh, I tell you what, that corner over there tells me everything I need to know. That is such a private space for the younger kids, honestly. That in the addition of the.
Like especially when it's just like uh the story hour, you don't, you don't part into the school.
It's a much easier area to.
And uh everything's on their head, uh useful, useful, something like that, at the section, like. Anyway, that's interesting. I gotta, I gotta think about it.
Dan. I just have to say. After hearing all the stories I heard today, we were talking about. Board meetings and agendas and how to run the meetings and Robert's rules of orders.
We're broadcasting right now?
Sorry.
So maybe better to save this?
Okay. It was actually very complimentary, but yes.
Nonetheless.
Thank you.
Okay, we are unmuted.
Uh maybe at the Denali Borough School District School Board is called to order at seven oh four.
Yes. Kristen Randall.
Here.
Boris Shreve.
Here.
Jenna Hamm.
Excuse.
Tammy Oland.
Excuse.
Thank you, Lauren Bruins.
Yeah.
Don and uh Katie Greby.
Excuse.
And Dawn Adams.
Ford, Ford, others. Almost ever, thank you. Forst, you'd like to take the first one.
Uh I move to adopt the agenda and consent agenda as.
Second. Any objections to adopting the agenda? Since there's no objection, the agenda, the consent agenda had been adopted.
I am. So we'll start out, we'll have one person uh ask a brave volunteer to read this out loud for us a couple of times and then. Brave volunteer will start us off saying good evening to the group, be welcomed, and then share uh thoughts or reflections on this this evening. So there's someone that would be willing to read this for us.
Sure.
Please.
There is more in us than we know. If we can, oh, sorry. If we can be made to see it perhaps for the rest of our lives, we will be unwilling to settle for anything less. Kurt Hong. There is more in us than we know. If we can be made to see it perhaps for the rest of our lives, we will be unwilling to settle for anything less. Good evening, board. Quite slightly confusing as written, um. Yeah, this one's hard to handle for me today, um. But I think, you know, this is getting at the. There's people. Around us, you know, especially educators and people that we, we're going to work in a school that that help. Foster that in our kid, you know, and our students, or that's what we're hoping for um. Every day that that those kids don't always recognize like how capable they really are. And you're hoping that build a community around them that helps them see that um so that they. Feel that they're unwilling to settle for anything less, that, you know, they can go after um some of those dreams and and. You know, those adventures that uh we know that they're capable of and. We hope to teach them that they can. See that within themselves. Kristen.
Good evening, Lauren.
Evening, Kristen.
I'm not sure what else I can say from that, but um. But there truly is more in us than we know. And and I think that, you know, whether it comes from a, a teacher, whether it comes from a parent, whether it comes from. You know, like, you know, an employer that we had or have, you know, if we can be made to see all that we can do. You know, and we're unwilling to settle, you, you just think about that. We won't settle for anything less if we, if we can know that and 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 I just think that's an incredible thing, you know. Um going back to school, getting close to the end of the Napster's number one, if I can get two assignments done. You know, I was worried going into it, but. Um I feel like my parents instilled in me some confidence that that I can do hard things, I can do hard things. And and they helped me to see that. And so I knew that I didn't have to settle for something less. I didn't have to settle for like, I can't do this or self doubt. I might have self doubt and other things. But I knew I could do it. I just needed to get back into that learning idea at fifty years old. And and I can do it and don't settle for less because you can do it. And I think that that's just. Don't settle for less. You are more than you hopefully realize. And I hope they have something in their lives to really help them realize that. Dawn. Good evening, board.
Evening, Dawn.
Um yeah, it speaks potential, the potential that we all might have and and us and um. But I feel like you have, like, it takes the people around you to help you see. Like this, this, your world is so much bigger than what, than what you maybe you've experienced thus far. Like, there's, there's a lot less there is, and there's a lot more that we can succeed at. So I guess it's, I like the idea that it helps, that others can be helped, we, others can help, um certainly because.
Beautiful.
Evening, Forrest.
Basically the same thing, like I said, I'll just repeat it and say from a coach's standpoint, you know, uh. When you are watching these kids, especially when they come in as freshmen and. You know, I, I remember being that freshman, I was slower, I was smaller, it was harder, weaker, and you can see that, that, that there's more in them. Uh that they can reach further potential than what they have. Every breath does not feel like that for the kid, you know, and uh sometimes I work, it feels the same way. I'm like, ah, I don't, I don't even know if I want to. Do more, but people say I can do more and go further and um it's an interesting one because. Hopefully we have the drive within ourselves to do more, but oftentimes it takes encouragement from the outside to be able to propel us forward. So hopefully we're all helping encourage even those around us to, to be able to see what more they become.
Good evening, board.
Evening, Tina.
Um so for, for me, this embodies um when we push ourselves. Beyond the limits that we normally think we're capable of, that's when we see we're capable of much, much more. And are willing to then push ourselves into that discomfort more often. And once we've done that ourselves, I believe that it makes it easier for us to. Support, encourage and um guide others through their own discomfort um to achieve more. Dan.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Dan.
An interesting thing with this, and I used this in a, in another group uh earlier this year, um. I think about this quote a lot in times when. I did settle for something less. And the feeling afterwards. And one was academic and one was extracurricular. And the academic one, I was like, I was in fifth grade, science fair project. There's this little, I was doing something on tranchillas, did this little clay model and little poster board thing, you know, got, got the job done. Um and it might have taken me like, it might have been hard to get my, all that stuff together, we didn't have supplies or ability to make nice stuff like that. Um but I just remember my teacher coming by and going like, just quietly, like maybe in the evening presentation thing, he just leaned down real close and was like. I know you can do better than this and I never want to see something like this from you again. And it just rocked me to my core because I was like. You're right. And I like, I think I'm just kind of like, I got it, I'm done, like, everything's fine. And he was like, ah. And he did it quietly, he didn't like do it in front of class or anything, but it's still just like really impacted me like. Don't do something like this again. And then I remember I was a, a senior in high school, I was a drum major of the marching band. And I put a lot of time practicing my specific routine with like the military baton and twirlings and leading the band and stuff. And as because of that, when I was a junior in high school, I had uh like one first place in every parade that I'd been in. And when I was a senior. Because of like timing, I wasn't able to participate in one parade, so they let somebody else kind of stand in for me for that parade. And they did led some of the practices at school. And during that period of time, I just wasn't putting in as much time practicing. All the different kind of weird techniques that I would have to do to like, how to make sure the baton stays at the same angle as you go. all the different kind of weird techniques that I would have to do to like, how to make sure the baton stays at the same angle as you go like up and down with it. Um, how do you make sure it doesn't go too far out from from your body? So like you're marching like in place against the wall going up and down so your hand doesn't come out far, like a lot of just time in the evenings. And went to a parade and it was a big one and I didn't even place. And it was kind of like this shock of like, yeah, you're not good because you're good. You're good because you put time into it. And for whatever reason, you were willing to settle. Like if you weren't given that practice time during the kind of formal school practices, like you needed to find that extra hour or two a day and figure out how to put it in for this because whatever it was, I, and I knew it was like, whatever I'd done, I'd settled and thought it'd be okay. And it was like, yeah, can't, can't do that again.
Do we have any public comments on agenda items?
We do not.
There's no objection, I will suspend the rules and move the Tri Valley um, school student presentation to later in meeting when they arise. Will the mayor be joining us?
Not this evening, he has a conflict, but he did provide the written report for you.
The administrative reports, does anyone have any questions? Man, and school reports, committee reports. Looks like the conference room is quite busy last meeting. Um, federal programs report, do you want to highlight anything in that?
None, unless there are any questions.
Well, I had a question. I was with that P S E A consolidated grant that wasn't approved. Um, was that a timing thing? Or is it just recent?
Just the way it goes.
Okay.
Like it's, it's honestly, it's like these grants, we, we write them up. Oftentimes, again, we're getting support from CERC for some of the complex ones. Um, it goes through draft, Jeremy looks at it, does the budget, I do an approval, it goes to the state, and the state rejects it. And they tell you kind of what's wrong. And it's always like small technical stuff. And you go, okay, and you correct that. And you go through that process, send it to the state. Maybe they'll take it. Oftentimes I'll reject it again. And so there's a, it's kind of like, this is the back and forth process. Like at this point, it has been submitted and been accepted. But it's, it's a normal thing for us to to go through that.
The executive line instruction reports. Kind of people just wanted questions. Um. I'm sure we've been through this before, but Dan, can you give me a refresher on the instructional leadership teams like role?
So it's a group of teachers and administrators, we actually met today. Um, kind of it's, it's kind of more formal description of its role is that it helps monitor and inform the work plan. And the work plan is kind of like another kind of organizational structural plan that we have, really looking at implementing um, the Denali learning model. So underneath our strategic plan, strategy one, using Denali learning in order to achieve our mission and engaging our students with authentic experiences in order to achieve our mission. And so that that team on a technical basis, what they do is oftentimes will look at either student performance data or like instructional data that we collect from different types of observations and learning walks to try to kind of answer questions like, how well are we doing in terms of that implementation and the impact on student learning? Or look at it through the lens of what's the area that we need to be focusing on in the work plan itself? So today we took a look, um, kind of based on data that we'd collected and looked at last year. Actually looked at and provided input to the design of the in-service that we have scheduled in October. And uh, under the kind of big theme of helping us strengthen our student engaged assessment practices.
Okay, so, yeah, taking that to the in-service days and um, and then another clarifying, um, in the norms for the actively participated, it says airtime, I didn't like.
Well, in in some meetings, you might notice that one person might seem to talk a lot. I've been told I can talk a lot. And so monitoring airtime would be kind of a a reminder to, hey, monitor how much time I might be speaking in a meeting. And if there is a meeting that someone's being maybe quiet, to be aware of, hey, we have a quiet person. And maybe they're just an internal processor, but we might want to make sure that we're making sure to offer and explicitly say, hey, Lauren, we haven't heard from you yet. Do you have anything you'd like to share? And so it's word about like, how do we make sure that we're giving opportunity for for all voices?
Um. Can you guys can remind me if there's a specific reason, and maybe this is a personal personal issue. Is there, sometimes the the director of learning report is lengthy and it's hard to consume. Um, going through all a lot of the other stuff, is there a specific reason? To have to do them like more quarterly, is there?
We're working on getting them more regular, which also cuts down the
On every month. Um, it's so ripe of information, especially about the successes and and achievements under the Denali learning model and writing through the staffs update. I guess I would hate to squash squash it too much, but um, no, I agree. It's, I usually say Regular, yeah, if we got them every month, if maybe they could be a little bit shorter, I just, yeah, because they, they do have such great information on them. I think I'm kind of losing some of that at a certain point. Because it's not the only thing. I'm reading, you know, usually the two days.
And and that report is very focused on instructional aspects in school. Like we were in the work session asking, you're asking about like what reading interventions and stuff. That's really where you're going to see a lot of that.
Yeah, definitely not trying to take anything away from those because I'm, it's, it's great. I'm just wondering if it, if we got them every month, if they could be more digestible for me. But again, if it's a, if it's a personal thing, I can, I can deal with it, but it's not station with anyone else, just.
I agree, or she just did it audio, I could listen to it.
If I'm having it in there because I, I do, I do tell people like, if you would like an update, this is an exhaustive, you know, status of some, the Denali learning model, like it will help you understand the language that is being used. I, I, whatever she creates, I'm happy to have created. If we want to ask her to focus on certain areas that are more useful to us, maybe that's how we would change, ask for the tailor. Yeah, again, I wasn't asking for it to tailor, I was wondering if we had them every single month, if they would be shorter in length. When she would be giving us information every month, so we compile.
We can work on it too, we can do.
That's all.
Because we enjoy them so much, we don't want to wait three months.
The, um, is the school using the infographics that were created? That were, she included the Denali learning infographic?
Yes.
Supporting the cultural message.
Yeah, and like the, the norms, the supporting a culture of excellence, like as an example, I have printed copies of those in electronic copies. So oftentimes, ending a meeting, I'll ask the group then with, do we have any observations or feedback in practicing or modeling our norms and put those up? Which also allows us to, without saying, Dan, you talked too much. Lets us all kind of reflect on, you know, it seemed like we were a little challenged with airtime, monitoring airtime today.
Then anything that you'd like to highlight on the maintenance report?
No, I'll bring up some maintenance aspects in mine.
You have to report some correspondence. Um, Jeremy, Jeremy is for the business manager.
Yes, I believe he is in the meeting. His video is off.
Jeremy.
As well, how about now?
There we go.
All right, good evening, board.
Good evening, Jeremy.
And are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you for having me. Um, we do have a financial report as of August thirty first. Um, a quick update, the bulk of our uh, last thirty days has been focused on the audit. Uh, which as of now is complete. Uh, we had that just about a week and a half ago. Uh, we are still waiting for the preliminary report from them, and then we'll have a chance to kind of go through and uh, make any comments, um, and provide any feedback. And then um, from what I understand, a few weeks after that, we will have a finished audit report uh, for your review. Uh, as far as the financials go, um, through the end of through the end of August, um, as we look to the revenues, uh, we did have local sources come in at just over one point one million dollars, and that is largely made up of the required local contribution from the Denali Borough. In addition to that, uh, we do have um some interest revenue that is recorded in their monthly. Uh, the state sources, uh, we did receive a little bit higher than normal. Based on the new legislation, they've now sort of trued up what they um, short paid in July, and so that um they can give us the full payments throughout the rest of the year rather than waiting until later in the year when they sort of uh, backfill that. And then we did receive the first payment uh, through our transportation grants in amount of hundred and, hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, for the expenditures, um, you know, there's really nothing of note, um, in there. We're back into full steam with school back, we've got salaries, wages in there. Uh, the one thing I did want to just point out is that we're starting to track now in this variance column over on the right hand side. Uh, all the things that we currently know about how FY twenty six is shaping up um, compared to the original budget uh, that was presented before the year started. And I'll go through just a few of those notes uh, on page three as we get down there. And let's just go there. Uh, so for the revenue, um, the budget of BSA increase, we've noted that in there. Uh, we've removed our impact aid. We went through all of the grants now that they've been awarded and just updated those with the actual amounts awarded for each grant. And then there was in the past legislation, an increase to our transportation funding. There are a few small other uh, items that could possibly um, affect some of the revenue. Um, that will update as they come through, but really at this point, before we do present a revision, um, the biggest unknown out there is the Oasis count. Um, going through the various expense lines, uh, most of the variances is just due to truing up um actuals, actual staffing now, actual benefits, um, a few of the um items that were not accounted for properly in the beginning, health insurance has been trued up. Um, and so this is our current um, forecast uh, that we have based on all of those. Few different positions, um, the biggest thing to note on here is through the special education. Um, we had some wages that were in the operating budget that are being covered by the special education grant. And that is now been moved over, um, and that is what represents the bulk of uh, that difference in the special education. Um, a few um, maintenance items, as I'm sure you're aware, we now have a generator uh, that we have at Tri Valley um, that we're currently budgeting for about fifty thousand dollars for the year. Um, but that is the current um, variance that we're showing. As we move on to the grant page, uh, again, we have just the updated grant awards. Most of the grants um, are through and approved through the state. Um, there's a few that we're still working on submitting. But as of now, um, especially these recurring grants, you know, the Title VI special education. Um, this is sort of reflecting, uh, we've started to spend the money. Um, but as they are recurring grants, um, we're pretty well certain of the expenses that they'll be covering. And the last uh, large one, the early learning preschool grant, we're in the process of submitting that budget as well. Um, but currently starting to expense uh, mostly through all of these is wages to support the specific grants. And then as we take a look at the bank account balances, uh, in the um, operating and the business interest sweep, we're at just over seven point eight. Uh, we do have a replenished capital projects fund. We do, we did maintain the balance of our transportation fund. Uh, we did the transfer um, last year through our uh, operating fund to cover the deficit there. And then we've updated with new student allotments and carryover amounts. And that's the report I have for you today. And if there's any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Appreciate the class.
Have a nice day.
Good night. Thank you. So item ninety is the Tri Valley school report. Mr. Gurley, would you be open to the student presentation or go ahead with the school report? And do you to show the attachment in our agenda, or do you, would you like?
I can project here if you guys want to project there and I'll move the slide along with you. Mr. Gurley, could you help him turn on and connect to that screen, please?
Also, while on. We all walk her.
I think we'll wait till the November meeting and then you and I can maybe talk about. Yeah. It'll be a smoother, smoother side.
Are you guys?
Yeah. Look.
Mr. Gurley.
That's what's giving.
It's a Samsung.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, so we're in the stream. Oh, thank you so much, but many who, I swear.
Presentation changed since it was submitted.
I was like, I was like, oh.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's the same thing.
For you guys.
Just tell me when to advance this slide.
All right, hello everyone. Uh, thank you for allowing us to do a presentation here today. I want to say a big thanks to those you guys for purging our truck in the first place. This was a big thank you to all the teachers and to make the foot on.
um, so one of the big things that we did on this trip was go to a number of museums. Uh, some of the big ones were the Museum of American History, Museum of Natural History, uh, the National Air and Space Museum and the National Archives. Uh, we saw a lot of stuff at these uh museums that played into a lot of things we've learned over the year. It was really big to uh see the things we're learning now. Excellent. Uh, our learning targets for these days were I can observe exhibits and interpret their importance. And I can seek out new information from mountain. A big part of this was uh for something that helped with some of these learning targets was our background from the year. Uh, for kind of solving through coming up with that first learning target, a lot of our background have given us a better insight into what a lot of these things meant. And from there, it was kind of just uh personalizing the experience and finding what it meant to us. These were a lot of the exhibits we saw at these museums. Uh, there was tons of exhibits more than this, but these were some of the big ones and they gave a lot of insight into uh different historical events such as World War Two, Cold War, Vietnam War and uh Korean War especially. Uh, a lot of these places didn't only have exhibit on those things, uh, but also exhibits on things such as the Vietnam Gate, which was the plane that dropped the first Saturday football. So we saw a lot on that history as well as different pieces from our history. So this is a bunch of the pictures from the museums. You can kind of see some of the different exhibits that we got to enjoy. Um, and you can kind of see in there, we had a little bit of fun along the way as long as uh getting a lot of very in-depth feelings on these exhibits. So another day we
You guys, I know your names, but would you introduce yourself?
Yeah. Off the, on headache. Um, another day we visited the Arlington Memorial and it was a very fun day. It was really rainy and that just made the whole experience more surreal. And we went to Robert E. Lee's house, as you can see up there, also known as the Arlington House. And uh he fled during the Battle of Gettysburg and the government actually uh seized the home and the land and designated it as a military cemetery, military cemetery. We watched the changing of the guard at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, which was very cool to see. It was really quiet and just watching them like walk back and forth in like perfection. Um, was real cool. Uh, we watched the changing of the what of the wreath by uh, it was the Orange County Police Department in California, but it was uh the fallen service member's daughter actually performing it, which is very cool to see. And then also the all the tombstones look like an ocean of graves, which was like this made it more real to actually count how many gave their lives for our nation. So our learning targets for this were I can show respect and appreciation for the memorials and then just their importance and what they actually mean. And then we will strive to understand and learn again, like the importance, I mean, that will get to the Vietnam Memorial, but that like every single name on that wall is someone who gave their life for this country. Uh, these are some of the memorials and monuments we visited. Uh, you got the Washington Memorial, World War Two Monument, uh Lincoln Memorial. My favorite was the Vietnam War uh Memorial, the most bottom right corner. It was like a wall that it started small and then as you walked further, it got bigger and the names just kept adding up and adding up. And yeah, that was my personal favorite. And then these are just more pictures of us visiting DC and museums. Uh, we learned a lot and had a lot of fun while in DC. One of my favorite experiences was going on the metro. I was growing up in a small town, you don't get the like big city life. I've never been on a train before, so that was really important and significant memory for me. Next time.
My name's Kate. Um, and this was another one of our days. We went to the museum and amusement park. And we were able to connect to a lot of the ideas that we had learned in physics class to those like experiences that we were having on roller coasters. Um, during our physics class, we had made them all over our coaster and measured things like acceleration and velocity off of it. And so then you'll see me marking the videos to the experiences we're having. So our learning targets were I can connect mathematical equations to the forces I feel in my life. And I can explore career opportunities within the engineering field. So here's some pictures from our day. Um, we were able to visit on a day when, or we were able to visit on Engineering Day. So we were able to see two presentations about how roller coasters are built. And um, there's some interesting facts about one roller coaster in specific, which was named Raptura. Um, you can also see on the pictures a little bit, it's a little bit rainy and it just like not too bad. So it was actually really good for us because the park was pretty much almost empty. So we were able to go on roller coasters like over and over and it was just really fun. It was seventy people's first time on a roller coaster and it's so, it was just very exciting. Um, so back to relating it to our physics class through the engineering day, we were able to use this app called Five Box to measure the real um acceleration from the roller coaster that we were going on. So we had the app and we just put it up on our pocket. And then we're on a roller coaster. So as you can see on this roller coaster, Raptura, they measure almost five Gs of um acceleration. And from our physics knowledge, we knew that four to six Gs is enough to make a normal experienced average person um pass out. So that was very interesting. Um, yeah. Overall, we had a really fun day. I think it was a very good, long experience to go on roller coasters for the first time. And um, one interesting fact that stood out to a lot of us when you had your day was that roller coasters are going to be very different if they're water, if they're steel. So for example, on the day we went, it was very rainy. So several coasters went faster because there was less friction. But the roller coasters were slower because the war expanded with the water and also a lot of us found very interesting. Um, yeah, other than that, the day was super fun and it was a very, very experience and very educational as well. And then by the end of the day, we got back to the house and had a campfire to reflect on the day.
I'm Bolton and on our fourth day of the trip, we went to Harper's Ferry. It started off our day in the town of exploring and uh looking at historical buildings and uh sites. The help of a scavenger hunt, which there's some pictures up, up on the board right there. And here, you know. Excellent. While we were at Harper's Ferry, we tried to connect things we saw from the classroom with John Brown Reed, the things we saw there. And these are some of the learning targets that mentioned we were trying to make. I didn't realize how far around the read on Harper's Ferry, who was started this war. I can understand historical importance, Harper's Ferry and reference civil rights movements, and I can recognize beneficial and difficult position Harper's Ferry in terms of tone, which in the rivers. Uh, next slide. This was the summary of our day and our photo hunt, we had to take pictures with different things in the area like significant buildings and landworks. Uh, for example, take a picture next to the flood marker that was next to the old hardware store there. And we also took a picture of the oldest building in the area and being in Harper's Ferry helped us understand better the history of the town, like the Battle of Harper's Ferry. Um, these are pictures of two historical churches in the area which were about a hundred yards apart, but you might be able to tell one of them better condition than the other. Church on the left is Saint John's Episcopal Church, which was destroyed during the Civil War. And the church on the right, Saint Peter Roman Catholic Church, which escaped destruction because it flowed Union Jack flag with cheer of atrocity. Before we left, uh, we studied the rain habits learning targets. And then whenever we visited the town, we got a better understanding of visiting the actual uh sites. Stor college is one example of how Harper's Ferry contributed to civil rights movements. Also, John Brown Reed was a major effect towards civil rights. Depending on how you look at it, looking from a positive or negative perspective. You can't deny that John Brown's intentions were majorly in support of emancipation. Our next one. Uh, you can see that the town is in West Virginia, but its position on the rivers were very beneficial in the time. Uh, because boats were a major form of transportation. We were able to walk the bridge crossing from West Virginia to Maryland and it helped us give us a deep, give us a deep understanding of the location of significant things in the town. Next one.
So another one of our days on our trip, we went to um the town of Gettysburg. Um, and so in our ELA class, we read the book Killer Angels and this novel, um, it depicted the battles of Gettysburg during the American Civil War. And then alongside reading that book, we watched the movie Gettysburg. Um, so visiting the town really helped us connect to our study of the Civil War from US history as well. Um, the battle was the turning point in the Civil War and it involved the largest number of casualties. Um, we also, as you can see from some of the pictures, we visited the Gettysburg Museum, went on a guided horseback ride and explored monuments while there. Um, visiting this site, um, really helps see the reality of the war and it put a picture in our minds to the events that we read about in the book. Um, on the, on the side, you can see the guided horseback tour, the monuments you visited and so our learning targets for this day were, were that I can connect the events and battles in Killer Angels to what we saw in Gettysburg. And I can visualize the events and actions that took place exactly where we rode horseback and walked in Gettysburg. And I think that we um strong them at these. Um, so we got up, we had to get up pretty early for this day because it was about a two-hour drive there. But um, half of us saddled up and embarked on a two-hour guided horseback tour, which I found very fun. Um, the guide um, he got explaining the significance of what we were walking through, which was really cool because it was exactly where the battles happened. And it just, it just made it feel really, really real. Um, it was very educational as well. So oh, and then, and then the other half um explored Gettysburg Museum um and General Robert E. Lee's history and he was a very um he was a major general in the Civil War. And then uh the half, half, half of it, noon, we came back together as a group and explored the Gettysburg Cyclorama. Um, so the Cyclorama was a full circle oil painting surrounding us. Uh, these pictures don't do it justice. It was because it was like fully surrounding us and it was just, it was a really surreal experience. Um, but the painting really brought the battles of Gettysburg to life. Um, the lights change with the soundtrack. Um, and it was made by a French painter in eighteen eighty-four and then later purchased by the National Park Service. Um, can't really see in the pictures, but they added some three D touches to the base of it. So it's just it just really, in my opinion, it felt very real. Um, and it was a very unique and eye-opening experience for us. So then after we um finished there, we hiked up and around Little Round Top. And that is exactly where another major general of Chamberlain sat in the Civil War. And we saw in the movie that we were watching alongside the book, we saw him in the exact spot that we are in that picture. Um, which was really cool as well. Um, and we hiked to the, to where the twentieth man had their historic charge down Little Round Top and where the Confederate soldiers were marching up. And that was pretty moving because that was a very um significant point in the war. And then we drove back to the house and had another reflection after.
Alrighty, Monticello. So I came in, known absolutely nothing about Monticello. The only thing I knew was it was named Monticello. So went to Monticello, which was the house um at home of Thomas Jefferson. Um, so here are some of the speaker notes. Um, we can explain the Thomas Jefferson's um contributions to the founding of the United States, including the Declaration of Independence. Um, I can analyze how Monticello reflects the values, contradictions um and complexities of Jefferson's life. Um, and then I can also reflect on how visiting Monticello deepens my understanding of American ideals and contradictions. So we explored all of Thomas Jefferson's state, including his slave quarters, which was a really eye-opening experience. Um, personally, I didn't realize how many people in American history had owned slaves and how um just how they treated them. Um, it was really weird to see how this guy that like, like was fighting so much for like independence and rights for the American people. Um, just the difference and the contradictions he had, just like in his slave corps. Um, it was a really weird thing. Um, here are some of the things that Thomas Jefferson is um known for, old by the years is a common saying that you'll find by him. Um, he also helped in the separation between church and state, the American mind and helping limit the government. So we drove an hour and a half to Monticello, which was located on the outskirts of the city of Charlottesville. Monticello is twenty-five hundred acres. So it is, it was a lot more than just the house. It was a lot of the surrounding areas. Um, it, we went through security, um, which is just a general build detection test. Um, some of us had to go through it twice because they might have snuck around. Um, but that was pretty funny. Um, we made fun of them a lot for that. But uh, they showed a riot. So then we took a shuttle up to the house, which is about mile-ish, maybe a little less. Um, and there was quotes from Thomas Jefferson and then also people around his time about Thomas Jefferson. Um, so we arrived, got with our tour guide Jeff. Uh, he was a very informative tour guide. You could tell that he really cared about a lot about Thomas Jefferson's life. He knew tons of stuff about his life and stuff he didn't know. He actually looked up and talked to us later about it. Um, you could tell he really enjoyed it a ton. He also told us, um, Jefferson took forty-one years to plan and construct um his home and the little details he had. One of the things he had was he had a very accurate clock that he had to reset once a week. It went from his, the top of his, his house is three stories. So it went from the top of his house all the way down to the basement and he had to cut a hole because it wasn't quite big enough. That was a really cool thing that we got to learn though, we were there. Um, so after, after our tour, we got to walk around the property, um, kind of explore by ourselves. Um, I really enjoyed that. That was a very cool experience just to see underneath his house, he had a giant, he had tons of wine cellars. Um, he also had this huge pit that was an ice pit. I really enjoyed seeing that because I was wondering how they get the drinks cold off. So um, after our tour, we ate at Mitchell Tavern, which is a very old south buffet restaurant. It was constructed in seventeen eighty-four, which was eight years after the Declaration of Independence. It served a time accurate meal, which is very similar to our current day Thanksgiving meals. Um, after lunch, we visited some local gift shops nearby and bought some souvenirs, including a bugle that served as a wake-up call for those who were sleeping. I personally bought a uh replica, replica of the same gun that killed Abraham Lincoln.
Oh, I'm Sarah. So on the last day of our trip, we traveled to Chesapeake Bay, Maryland. Um, Chesapeake Bay Foundation was founded in nineteen sixty-six and it's the largest independent conservation organization dedicated solely to saving bay. It was a great experience to observe the natural habitat in another area. And their presentation was informative, we were engaged of, of observation along identifying similarities, differences with this ecosystem and other ecosystems in Alaska. This was new for this trip, so thanks to Slizel for helping us out for us. Our learning targets to stay were focused on connecting land use and human impacts to water quality and the Chesapeake Bay estuary. Making connections between Maryland's watersheds and coastlines and Alaska's watersheds and coastlines. And using careful observation, data collection, analysis and systematic information gathered during field experience in order to make these connections. And lastly, I can assert civic responsibility by analyzing my role and making so the first thing we did when we got there was learn about the bay and the Bay Foundation. After that, we studied different maps. I'm showing where the water in the bay comes from and where the fluids found in the bay come from. After that, we went out in the bay on canoes and we canoed pretty much all day with a small break. After that, we went out in the bay on canoes and we canoeed pretty much all day with a small break at noon for lunch. During this time, we tested the water quality. Some of the, some of the waters we did were pH tests, C, the acidity. Um salinity test to see how salty it was and turbidity test to see how easy the water was. The results for this test show that Chesapeake Bay is actually a pretty healthy water system. Um we also observed that the water was more sandy than our shore. Uh some of the animals that we saw were water snakes, eagles, turtles, fish, spiders and all spray. And lastly, when we got back after canoeing, we painted postcards on use of water for the bay. On your send pictures from today, you can see us here out on canoes and testing the water, setting the maps and there's a picture of the turtle.
Back from B C, we had a little over in Seattle, so we decided to make good use of our climate and explore the city a little bit. We took an underground tour, which was very interesting. We had a very engaged tour guide. Who had some very fun jokes and um just, we all didn't see the very good understanding of. The underground system. So one thing that a lot of us found very interesting, if you look really closely at the bottom left picture there, you can see the glass is a little bit purple. Um so the glass that we're standing on top of in that picture is actually on top of the. Underground system that we walked under, so we were able to go underneath the glass and like look up at the sidewalks and then come over the glass and look down. Um the glass had a little bit of a purple hue because of the sealant that they used. So it used to be very bright and let light in when it was clear glass, but when we were down there, it was pretty dim and dark, so we had to get lights and it will. Cause it had turned purple from the ceiling. Um overall, uh after the underground work, we decided to just explore the city a little bit more. It's been very cool. And it was. Just should I give you some of the data what if otherwise instead of me before? Um and yeah, so finally, thank you guys so much for letting us come in and speak about our learning. We had such an amazing time on this trip and I think that so many great connections were formed between peers. Um as well as many educational benefits. So thank you guys so much for supporting our learning.
Questions?
What was gonna ask? What is Wolf by the Years?
It was a saying that um it was about the slavery. There's a problem that um. It was, he was talking about grabbing the wolf by the ears, about like how people weren't quite, especially Thomas Jefferson, without him, he wasn't quite grabbing the wolf by the ears.
Okay, did, I have a few questions I want to say else you go for. Um Kate, on engineering day at Blue Dominion, did, or anyone? Did like getting information from the engineer change how you felt about the roller coaster?
I don't think maybe a little bit. I think a lot of it was more reassuring though. They were talking about lifestyle based structure really and everything, so. Especially after coming from our physics class, which was not a very structurally sound roller coaster. Oh encouraging, honestly, I'll be sure myself.
And a very part of that was how like frequently the, the kids was. So we're going to, you know, there's a reassurance there is. We thought they do their maintenance like on a weekly basis.
Um and then the Golden Scavenger Hunt at um Harpers Ferry, who designed it? We, you guys think? Okay, nice.
It was mostly designed to kind of get us to explore on our own.
Yeah.
Uh I, I think a lot of the pictures and stuff is just so we would go to those places that we otherwise have.
Okay, now um Mike, I'm gonna put you on the spot. You're, you're the one that said you hadn't heard of Monticello before. Um so you're, that reminded me that you came in as a homeschool student. Um and you joined the group that had already been focused on some of these properties and areas and how, like how difficult was that for you? To, to, to come in kind of um without some of their same knowledge and.
I, I personally, I didn't have any problems. I actually really enjoyed it um because I was coming from a area of not knowing anything, certain of these things. Um especially like Gettysburg. I knew about Gettysburg, knew it's in the Civil War. I knew some of the stuff that happened, but with this group specifically, actually, um I was just asking questions, maybe answer stuff and I'm gonna learn a lot more about that.
Great, you did an excellent job, given that you've had four months since the trip. And uh and thanks for making it back here in time. Ah yeah, yeah. Mr. Gurley. Love your presentation at this.
Well, as they're headed out, thank you guys so much for presenting. Really appreciate it. Well, I think I saw the chair and like. Well, good evening, everybody.
Evening, Tony.
Um for my portion now, I'd like to give everyone an update on travel progress for fulfilling our updated. Uh B B S D, what your priorities for this year, but similar format to what I presented last year to you guys. The first one on the list continues to be positive school climate. With staff, I continue to work with our staff intentionally set a positive tone for our building. I felt like we had a strong finish last spring and I'm seeking to build upon that success this year. Um we've also filled over our vacancies with our last position starting next week. There was a little bit of delay. I'm really excited to have a full, a full staff again. Um and then the staff surveys at the end of last year were mostly really positive. Um and even the ones that had some negative ratings were still like overall positive. And uh honestly, I take that as really good news that. Typically is, you know, looking at surveys, especially anonymous surveys. I tend, you know, of course, we're human. We tend to always focus on like the negative things. Oh my God, she visits. But I've kind of got to the point like, yep, it's all make, it's all positive. Okay, well, I don't know if I totally agree. It's all negative. I definitely don't agree. But, but seeing the ones where there's a lot of positives and then there's like specific negatives. And that's like, okay, so this is a person that thought really thoughtfully about the survey. They didn't just say, oh, that's all bad or it's all great. So that really gets my attention. Um and overall, the, the surveys were really, really super positive. So I appreciated ending on that strong note. Um concerning students, uh recently met with the high school student government and had a really positive meeting that was. Maybe last week, our time flies. Um we're setting up monthly meetings where I can check in like the log about, about their experiences and how the climate on this end of the building. Um I look forward to working more closely with them this year. Um he did some really positive gains in last spring's school climate connectedness survey. Um especially around the questions related to um students being able to identify that staff care when they're not here. And also that they knew that there was a staff member they could go to and understand if they care about them. Um that was one in the past that seemed to be uh low from my perspective, like hey, that, that can definitely be a lot higher. Um. And then this last year, they, they were quite a bit higher. Um we also did some intentional work. I mentioned this last year, we've also. Uh revamped it for this year by working specifically with our teachers in the secondary, grade six through twelve. Uh working with the relationship map and basically what that is, is we have all of the students on Excel spreadsheet, put them up on the wall. Uh like via projector or a smart board with the teachers in the room. They say, okay, who has got Forest? Who's got a good relationship with Forest? And we put those teachers names beside them. And what that, what that allows us to do is identify, okay, who's got Lauren? Nobody? Okay, Dan, you're gonna make sure you check in with Lauren, you know, and so we're able to kind of catch. We're, we're, you know, to staff may assume that somebody's got her. And in elementary, obviously, when you've got, you know, twelve, fifteen kids, like, you know, you know, that's your teacher. But in secondary, where they have multiple teachers, we just want to make sure that we don't have kiddos who are falling through cracks without that, that adult that knows they're intentionally checking in with them. Um so that's been pretty successful. Um. The second priority continues to be high quality instruction. Uh I referenced the staff surveys earlier, um looking at the principal surveys. Um it was, it was clear that like my lowest area with the staff surveys was being seen as an instructional leader. So that's something I'm working on this year. I'm definitely really sad quality instruction. Um I continue to work really closely with, with Karen Martin, um just trying to just absorb biosmosis, all of her brilliance. Um but also too, uh me and her is gonna be doing a book study this year. Um one of the uh Elena Aguilar books is solely around design professional development. And we're gonna be working on that this year, so I'm really hoping you just, like again, absorb some of that, because she does a really good job with that. Um and hopefully kind of strengthen my abilities in that area. Um we also recently completed our first round of map testing. Uh this is our district test. Uh we'll take it again in December and then we'll take the state's version in April. Um the data from this first round was used last Friday during our professional development time. Uh we're gonna do it tomorrow, serve some time with the data. But from this data, teachers made decisions about grouping for interventions and the touch areas needed. Um due this year, we were able to adjust some structural things in the secondary schedule. Um to allow for more staff to be available during the secondary learning lab time, so we're gonna actually have structured interventions happening for the kiddos that needed. In middle and high school that we've been able to identify with uh, with the map test and with other, with other measures. Um and all of these interventions are either in literacy skills or math. Um concerning community, uh community engagement, we uh completed our first open house in a very long time. And I really appreciate the members that were able to come. Uh really do appreciate that. Um the feedback from the event was very positive and we're already trying to think about how we can make it bigger and better for next year. Also really appreciate the uh, the local entities that have wanted to show up as well. And we have representation from the borough. Um we had the community library there. We had kids at membership represented. We had Alaska Body for Children represented there. And uh in addition to the board and then some other entities. So it was really, really great to see. Um on the communication front related to community engagement, uh many of you uh are aware, because you were able to get the mass message uh. You know, we were able to get the mass message system that accompanies our new website working during the recent power outage. Um I'm told, first time they've closed school here in like thirty something years. It just happened to be time, I guess. Um but I want to really um thank Rich Johnson, our tech director, doing a phenomenal job sitting in a really hot seat. But he was able to uh, to get that all figured out in time for us to be able to push out that mass message. Uh parents were able to receive email. Uh voice messages and also uh S M S text messages about the status of the building and us being able to come the next day. So it's a powerful tool. We're looking to, to make sure we're able to use effectively moving forward. Um lastly, concerning attendance, this is our fourth priority. Uh we continue to work on improving attendance. Uh we saw some positive moves by the end of last year in Tri Valley, particularly the increase in students with regular attendance. Uh the percent of students with regular attendance at Tri Valley this last year increased to thirty-two percent. From twenty-two percent the previous year, fiscal year twenty-four. Um this represents approximately a fifty percent increase in, in that number. Um so that's the. Roughly fifty percent more students last year uh were able to be in that category of having healthy attendance. Um being here ninety percent or more. Um also, I continue to work this year on having positive conversations with families about the impact of absences. And also seek ways where we can lessen the negative impacts which students inevitably do miss. One of the things we've, uh some of you may know, as parents that we've been able to, uh with the help of Jeremy, who was putting off. Over there, um he was able to digitize that prearranged absence form and it's now a droplet form. And that's been a game changer for us really. How it eliminates a lot of the uh paper shuffling, papers getting lost. And it's a much more streamlined pathway for parents and teachers to communicate about what kiddos are gonna say whenever they're not here. So really looking forward to great that from that future. Um so these are some of the ways we're address, we're addressing the leadership qualities this year so far. Also, I'd like to give a special recognition, or recognition to everyone who helped make the new school sign of the alley. Um Cass Morosh was going to take on a huge project during her last year. She could have coached it. She decided to take on a big project and I really appreciate that. I also want to thank local landscape artists in your ice and sphere for working with our students. I also really appreciate uh use of the coal mine for donating use of the lift. And our maintenance team, Curtis, Amy and Dwight for getting it up for the bad weather sets in, you know, it was a race against the clock for sure. The next day we had snow. Uh also want to thank Chris Tapp for the uh, for, for the good press and the news miner. If you haven't seen that articles, we made the proper thing. And of course, I want to also acknowledge all the work the students put into this uh, this awesome project and I hope it's uh, hope it's here for thirty or forty years after that. Um I'm doing a change that's this. Those left, you know, this is, this is the picture that was taken the day we had a dedication for the sign and that's the entire school. And uh they're gonna frame that somewhere here in the library, I believe. But uh happy to take any questions you guys may have for me now.
You talk, you talked about survey response. Um was that uh just staff responses or parent responses as well?
With the, with the instruction leader or the positive culture, which aspect?
Well, I'm thinking of the um. It, it seems like there's staff and parent and student surveys that are seen by. I'm just wondering what the response would be.
He wouldn't have that. If you're curious, I could look it up for you.
So what if you were primarily, primarily looking at the data from the staff?
Well, that's what I, I did look at, I did look at all of it. That's what I was highlighting for the report, but you know, I gotta figure out how. We can get more participation with the parent surveys. Um seems to be one of, I mean, obviously with students, we have to cap the audience.
Yeah.
Um we get, we get most of our staff as soon as, but uh I would say probably, I had to put a figure that. Less than fifty parent surveys that, that I saw from, from what we sent out. Um so trying to think of ways to increase that engagement, because it is, it is a good tool to have. Any other questions?
Appreciate the structure of your work. Back to our written scheduled program, Superintendent.
Yeah, I'll go through and I'll highlight uh and add a few things to the written report. Um also want to point out before I start talking, in the, in board docs, you'll see that I've included kind of a agenda item with my written report along with a picture of. Us receiving the big check from the borough, but then also has another item, just kind of separate and make it easier for you to find in reference. Uh providing uh my annual report on kind of conditions of the school district for last school year. And the annual data summary. You looked at the data summary during the work session. Then also put uh another item that includes all the administrative regulations. That I've updated uh largely over the summertime. Uh generally throughout the school year, as the policy committee is updating and reviewing policies, I then go through in the summertime. And look at the administrative regulations and do any updates that are required there. There are also regulations that deal with uh. Sometimes like uh mileage rate compensations, uh substitute teacher pays. It's different things that kind of need to be looked at each year. So I look at those and the board does not approve administrative regulations, but the intent of them is that they. Define more clearly uh kind of like the implementation of a board policy. And so I publish them like this to give you guys an opportunity to go like, whoa, that seems like really. Wrong direction of what you think the policy is, which allows us then to have a conversation to potentially. Wrong direction of what we think the policy is, which allows us then to have a conversation to potentially. Yeah, agree and redirect things on like, yeah, I think the AR needs to change. Or potentially going like, no, the AR seems to be right, but yeah, the maybe the policy needs amending. See, look through and kind of look and see is is again, does it seem like things are being implemented along with your intentions? So that's kind of like how to look at those administrative regulations. So then with my report, Mr. Early talked a little bit about the power outage and school closure that we had at Tri Valley and I refer to it as like the. First closure in living memory. Because again, I was the teacher in Anderson like the thirty years ago and I go, I never remember hearing about it, about Tri Valley shutting for a day. It was always stories about never shutting. Um, and I. Talk about a little bit, I explained even at the Borough Assembly meeting that the weird thing was is that we lost mains power. We lost power coming in from the grid. And like when I drove up to kind of check on the school at seven in the morning, immediately I knew something was wrong because I didn't see the emergency lights. Through the windows, because every classroom, there's a light that is always on and that is powered by our backup generator. So all of a sudden I'm like, whoops, I come into the building, it's again pitch pitch black. Uh, Mr. Girlies there, we get with Curtis and he's like, yeah, the backup generator is running, but there's no power. And at that point, it's like, all right, well, we got till seven thirty and then we're gonna have to make a decision. Because of the backup generator, not only do we not have light in the building. Like maybe we could have classes through just the window light at that time of the year, but we don't have, we don't have any water. We don't have any water to drink. We don't have any water to flush any toilets. And in that period of time, we don't have any ability to make any arrangements for anything. We can't order ten or twenty porta potties. We can't get pallets of water and distribute them into the classrooms. Had we had a day or two notice, we would have figured something out. But at seven thirty, it was, let's make a decision, let's get the word out, let's try to see if we can. Stop people from coming as much as possible. We made sure that again, as students were coming in that that missed the message, that we were able to meet those students and either. Immediately turn them around and have their parents uh take them home, not just drive away right away. Um, we did have a few kids that were coming in on the bus. When the buses came, it's like, all right, we need to connect and make sure that we can get these kids home. Got everybody home and then it was like, all right. Then it was kind of like, all right, what do we do now? And it was tech, okay, let's figure out when we remember it's like, yeah, we do have a texting system. That came with that, the new website platform. So let's get that sorted and figured out. I talked with Curtis and they were able to say like and and confirm the problem with the backup generator is that the exciter is broken. The exciter I had to look up is uh an electromagnet that in a large generator. Um, creates the magnetic field for the the metal coils to move through to create the larger flow of electricity. And so without that exciter. We can't, we can run the generator, we can't generate any electricity. It is beyond our ability to repair and we have spent some time looking for like potential replacement pieces for that exciter. Because we can kind of judge the cost of any replacement part with the rental cost of a new backup generator, about five thousand dollars a day. Um, but I really appreciate everybody's flexibility with that, like again, like the feedback in terms of like the communications. One person was like, hey, you need a text system. Another person was like, why didn't you tell me anything? And we're like, oh, the message went, I think, to your spouse. But he was already on the road and missed it. Um, so the communications even without like our firm system went well. Um, just appreciated everybody's flexibility with that. Appreciate a GVA coming down and we were able to sort the problem out. That day and get us powered up by the evenings. We were back in school the next day. And the commissioner did approve that as an emergency closure day, so we don't have to make up the instructional day. We don't have to change our calendar to do that. Also sticking with the appreciations, I want to acknowledge and appreciate that in Alley Borough. They provided us with the first installment of the local contribution in the form of a check for one million one hundred fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars. That's the required local contribution based on the value of real and personal property in the borough. They also presented us a ceremonial check for the full amount for this year. Um, which they'll true up usually November, December. That total amount is two million nine hundred thirty thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars. Represents about twenty five percent of our total revenue and expenses. So pretty significant support from our local borough. Really appreciated being invited to the Anderson School Hayride, something I enjoy doing every year. Um, it was neat to see not just the Anderson students there, but there um were some homeschool kids that came by. There was a grandkid of uh some people that live in Anderson, actually the uh daughter of a student that I used to teach. In Anderson was there and she participated in that, even had a couple of Tri Valley kids come there for a little while. So we had. I think at one point I was counting and we had over over twenty kids, both our students, the Tri Valleys, the homeschoolers. The the visiting kid and then some some real kind of, I'd say, young future grizzlies that were in the area as well. We heard Jeremy talk a little bit about our audit uh in the report and I'll mention it uh orally, we in. In working with the auditors, we did kind of see and come up with two issues that we were wondering whether or not they'd rise to a finding. They've confirmed that they haven't. Um, one of those was this past year when we transitioned our reimbursements for peak families from physical checks. To the ACH transfers direct to checking accounts. There was a period of time of a month or two. When we weren't making sure that we had like two uh approved authorized account check signers. Sign those ACH authorizations. And we caught that ourselves within within that year after that period of time and then corrected that. So that myself, where the approved board members are signing those documents to affirm that that it's right proper to make that payment. Just as if it was a physical check. And then the second issue really related to just as the auditors are saying, we want these files as samples for for them to test for internal controls. We found that we were struggling to find some documents within files and it'd be like one off things like uh single employees, uh single individuals. Uh, union dues authorization to as far as to withhold uh dues, fees and transfer that to the union. Or somebody else's health insurance election form, which again kind of acknowledges the amount of money that's going to be withheld for their uh. Employee contribution for the healthcare premium. And we think those really relate to the transitions that we've experienced in the executive administrative assistant position. And so it kind of like, we think that with increased consistency there with Tina finally being full time with us, that was the improvement there. It's also highlighted. Kind of, and we want to be looking at improvements into our electronic file system. Both in terms of just how we internally structure kind of like our cascade of folders to find things, but also looking for for. Systems where we could electronically house documents scanned in and saved specific and relative to each employee. Trying to find that. So it's again, it's easy to say, where's the document? I'll look up Dan's folder. And there it is, just as if I were opening up the file drawer and pulling out Dan's physical file. So the end of year FY twenty five that the auditors are looking at. Um, kind of a correction from the information I gave the board in August, we did correct an erroneous uh revenue entry. Um, of sixty five thousand dollars. It's kind of related to odd accounting and payments that are required for the student transportation services. And so we erroneously included a transfer from the transportation fund into the operating when it actually goes the other way. And is actually already like accounted for within the structure of the budget when we show the full expenses of transportation. That is expenses leaving our operating budget. The odd thing is that it technically goes to the transportation fund and the payment goes to the transportation company from the transportation fund. It's a strange structure that the state like requires. And it's the only thing that says you have to pay directly from that fund, even if you're using quote operating funds to pay for it. Um, so it did end our kind of end of year um position to, we think, a surplus of about uh three hundred thousand dollars. And we're getting to the point where Jeremy's gonna start looking at um kind of on that lower object level of the budget. Um, proved budget versus actuals and then go through and say, well, why is this different? Why is this different? To identify all those variances, because from May, when we were projecting a deficit of a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars to this size surplus. We can, we can explain some of the things uh on some bigger, bigger pictures, but there's still two to three hundred thousand dollars that were like. What what led to that? Because we want to budget tighter and more accurately. And we want to be able to apply that to the FY twenty six budget revision. And apply that as we start building the FY twenty seven budget that would help us better utilize those funds. Other thing on a on a financial side to take note of, we learned about uh an investment opportunity that we want to investigate more with the the. The board, it is the Alaska Municipal League Investment Pool. So Alaska Municipal League, it's a kind of the Alaska. Support group entity for boroughs, municipalities, cities. And they offer basically a money market fund that invests in very short term. Treasury notes and very short term corporate bonds. And returns and interest rate about twice what we're currently getting in our business sweep. And the fund itself holds. A dollar to dollar value on that mutual fund, so is very secure in terms of principal. But because of the structure of the municipal fund, it doesn't have like a legal guarantee of the principal. That we currently get with the business sweep account that we do through the collateralization. Um, we're gonna learn more from the Alaska Municipal League about it. The Denali Borough currently invests in that. We also will need to look at and talk about this in our finance and policy committees. Because our current policy on investment, uh BP thirty four thirty, my reading of it would not allow us to invest in that because. It doesn't have that legal guarantee of certainty of principle. While short term treasuries like that's, those are structures that other funds that even like I personally hold just cash in. It's a dollar for dollar investment, but it truly doesn't have that legal guarantee and there is potential in major catastrophe that that. Dollar to dollar link could break. Um, so we'll look at that more and then potentially come to the board and see if that's a, that small risk is is one worth taking to potentially double our interest returns on those funds. We shared and talked a little bit, uh some information on student achievement and growth during our work session and some things I wanted to highlight. And two pieces, one, when I was looking at uh achievement indicators. In this system of student success based on the twenty twenty four assessment that our um. English Language Arts Achievement Level, while at forty six, almost forty seven percent, that was about forty percent higher than the state average. Significantly higher than the state average. And our math achievement indicator was over fifty three percent of our students were proficient, proficient or advanced. That was sixty two percent higher than the state average. So it's still a lot of room to grow. But in terms of like compared across the state, like incredibly strong performance. The other piece of information and it's not in my written report is that in the, for the FY twenty five assessments, the state shared. Uh, kind of list of districts with superintendents showing their performance kind of in rank order. And I was able to look at that and do some kind of quick calculations and control and really looked at our Denali Borough's brick and mortar experience. And a brick and mortar achievement level for English Language Arts and Math compared to brick and mortar achievement levels for other districts. And in English Language Arts, my kind of calculations uh make me feel that I believe that we are the the. Second highest achieving school district in the state for English Language Arts and our brick and mortar. And that mathematics were like between fourth and fifth in the state. So very proud of that achievement for for our students. Couple of things just to note, uh again, with facilities, kind of circling back to our power issue, our back, our rental backup generator is on site. Um, we've got that plugged in. It powers what the prior backup generator powered. So again, it's gonna give us emergency lights. It's gonna give us, we can run the water pump. It, remember, it does not circulate heat in the building. And so we're still waiting for the full replacement generator that is right sized and can be wired in. And power like, you know, far more systems and make this goal like really operational. And really have this be like a really actually safe, long term community evacuation site in the event of a long term power outage in the winter. We're anticipating to get that generator uh in January. We're trying to see if we can get uh trenching work done that's needed to to dig some pathway. For the cabling, get that done the next week or two, so that we can hopefully get that wired in when it arrives rather than waiting into the spring. When the generator went out, we did experience problems that was interesting, our automatic door locks really. They like, the server went down for that. And so then as it started up, that was struggling and it seemed like things got better. And then with the doors, we noticed like the next day or two, things started getting worse and it took a long time to kind of sort out the. Kind of the issue with that. We believe we've got it all sorted out at this point. Um, there was a physical problem with the physical server that the software was running on. Which led to then problems within the virtual server that was running the software. We ran through, we corrected all of that. And then wonderfully, at the same time, there were also many doors that experienced uh low batteries. So then like on the tech side, it's like, it's working. And people are like, but this door doesn't work. And it's like, it needs a battery. Like that would have happened today regardless. So we had to do some of that updates, but the system is is up and operational at this time. We did successfully submit our major school maintenance grant. So that was submitted and we were able to include the thirty five percent engineering work for the Tri Valley Septic and Leech Field. Um, we'll start hearing in the winter kind of like what our scoring is and ranking for that. And then ultimately funding is uh determined in the state capital budget. So it'll take some time to figure out. Just distracted by the Roomba in the room. There you go. Couple notes on vehicles. Um, we are working to surplus uh one of our old expeditions and the Anderson plow truck. They are posted on the uh auction site govdeals.com. We're trying to work up some flyers as well. We've had a couple inquiries locally. We need to make sure to get that information out to the people that did reach out and talk to us. Um, also this evening, we heard that uh our activity bus had a brake issue on the way back that the brakes heated up. Um, the bus, I had a word from Curtis that after they kind of. Stopped for a while, let it cool down and they've been driving, they haven't had it repeat. So once it's up here, then we'll get a look at it and. Make sure that we're in ship shape before we send it out again. Other thing which you might have noticed coming in, but in addition to the Tri Valley sign that went up. Um, we were able to bring up a chainsaw artist from Willow who did a refresh on Victor the Viking. And uh as he said, also gave him a pedicure. Um, actually removed and then put on new feet for Victor. We're also trying to see if uh Scott, the artist, um, can get to Anderson and take a look at the totem pole, which is also really showing its age. And again, it's something that we'd like to figure out, hopefully if something that we can just repair and keep in place safely. Uh, a little worried about that because it is something that's been there for thirty, forty years as well. And it's it's shown, shown the impact of weather on that. Couple notes on personnel. Do you want to uh mention that uh Mahadia Miranda did decline the uh. Parent liaison peak secretary position that we'd offer her. Um, that was down in the Anchorage office. We were able to hire and we approved in the consent agenda, Liz Hummel for the local. Um, apparently is on peak secretary position be located uh here in Healy over at the district office. We are still recruiting for the Anderson secretary and teaching assistant position up there that recently opened up. And in talking with Garen, um, in looking at the enrollment figures in Denali Peak, we are moving that. Um, parent liaison secretary position from part time to full time. Our enrollment is already at uh nine hundred students from a budget at eight hundred. And with certified staff that just uh let people know that we did receive the H one B visa extension for Rachel Nicole. Um, so she's uh authorized to work with us for another couple of years. And I'm hoping that that will take her through the rest of our permanent residency process. Um, Maria received that same visa extension a couple of months ago. So we're starting to kind of go. What about Rachel? What about Rachel? And so hers came through. Let's see. Other thing that I would note here is that the student results from the spring twenty twenty five state. Assessment, the AK star is being mailed home to parents tomorrow. So people start receiving that individual score of of your student and say, if you do have questions about like, hey, what does this mean? What what? What anything is about it? Uh, we do include a close a letter in there and we ask that you you contact the principal to to kind of. Head that out because it's not really necessarily a, it's not a classroom based assessment. Um, while we do look at that, both to kind of give us ideas of like how things are going. The results you're gonna get in September, a result of a test in March and April. And instructionally, we're much more interested in the results that we see from the map growth assessment that Mr. Gurley mentioned in his report. That we completed this last week, like that's much more important for us in terms of like, what do we do in the classroom? It's much more based on that recent actionable information than this information that's trailing so much. This is a good check in, gives us that great standardized information, is great to tell us like, gives that information about how are we doing as a school? How are we doing as a state? But in terms of like impacting classroom work. It's a bit late for us, which is why we do these other assessments throughout the year. The other thing that, two other things that I would mention, um, one, just on a community basis, uh, came out in the paper that the interior. came out in the paper that the interior community health clinic is closing their Healy clinic in November. Which mean we don't have a Healy, a year on Healy based, uh, health provider at all in any form. And the other thing I wanted to let the board know is that we have a student who is transferring into, uh, our brick and mortar schools as a senior and I am doing a waiver on one of the technical graduation requirements, related to just the timing of us coming in, what those requirements are, kind of the planning of, of the different things. He still meets the overall requirements for the like total number of courses within that subject area. It's just kind of a specific course required under the social studies aspect that we'll do a waiver for. And with that, I didn't entertain any question.
How much did you say for the janitor?
It's five thousand dollars a month. I might've said that, I'm sorry. Even the five thousand a month is expensive. But it's unfortunate. It's like, yeah, we, we need that because we need to be able to operate. We need to be able to, again, make sure we can at least heat the well house itself. So our well doesn't freeze if we have a power outage. We can maintain that level of critical infrastructure at least.
I just had a wonder about the, um, the municipal league investment pool. I'm wondering if deed might have some say on school. Just a wonder.
I don't believe they do. We can look at that within policy committee when we look at kind of guidance in terms of like language.
On to ten A, with business. I move to adopt the second and finally the board's goals as well. Second. Just to remind everyone, uh, so it's been moved in second to, to about the second reading of the annual, um, goals and priorities. That I'll just remind you that we looked at this in our August meeting and, um, we, not everyone was comfortable with the language in number two. So we, Jenna and I met, we postponed until this meeting and Jenna and I met and changed the language a little bit, but we didn't want to change it too much. We just wanted it to reflect maybe a little bit more of, um, of the conversations that we had in our work session in, in August. And, and also that we decided that, uh, an update on the strategic plan twice per year instead of four times per year is sufficient with this good to human school. So that's what's before you to, to prove any discussion. We're ready to vote. Tina, could you take a roll call vote on the, uh, adopt things that will provide those authorities?
Yes ma'am. Forrest Shreve?
Yes.
Lauren Bruins?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
And Dawn Adams?
Yes. To, uh, that goes in parties. Thank you, Dan. I'll let you forward final versions of that to all the places it needs to go. Moving on to, is everyone okay with us just continuing? Your business. Eleven A. I wonder if you're comfortable taking this motion and just using the lists in the agenda?
Yeah. So I'm still reading out numbers, reading out the numbers. I will do my best. I move to accept the first reading of the presented fall, uh, policies and forward them to the October school board meeting for a second reading. BP twenty one twenty one, BP twenty one twenty two, BP twenty one twenty three, BP twenty two ten, BP twenty two twenty, BP twenty two thirty, BP twenty two fifty, BP twenty two seventy, BP twenty three hundred, BP twenty four hundred, BP three thousand, BP thirty one hundred, BP fifty one eleven, BP fifty one thirty one point nine five, BP fifty one thirty eight, BP sixty one. I'm getting busy. Uh, BP sixty one eighty one, uh, BP ten thousand, BP one hundred ten, AR one hundred ten, BP one hundred twenty, BP one hundred twenty one, BP one hundred thirty, AR one hundred, uh, it's good videos. BP one hundred forty, BP one hundred fifty, BP one hundred sixty, BP one hundred seventy, BP one hundred eighty, BP one hundred ninety.
Second. Go ahead. I'm doing a second text of the first reading of the presented policies in board. The October school board meeting. It's, you guys did a lot in two hours, the policy meeting in August, September. Do you want to highlight?
The, the couple of things to highlight, and if you read the, the policy committee report, it really outlines a lot of the work. Um, a lot of those are like everything in the new ten thousand section is a big update, uh, suggested from AASB, related to charter schools. Not only is it just kind of big structural update, it does include some changes in state law. So it brings us into compliance with that. Um, and really what we've done is just accepted the model as is, and then deleted out the, uh, couple of existing policies, uh, in charter school that we currently had so that there's no conflict. The other ones that kind of had a more focused look at it, um, the policy on class size was directed as part of HB fifty seven and it does have specific kind of goal numbers, which are well above any of our biggest classes, um, and are only goals anyway. There's, there's not a kind of requirement within that, not even within the, uh, state law about it. The one that we, the policy committee didn't recommend for further discussion, but maybe to just be aware of more is, uh, board policy fifty one thirty eight on cell phones and electronic devices. Part of HB fifty seven said every policy, every district needs a board policy on the possession of cell phones and electronic devices. And didn't even say like, well, it should say this, like it, not even like the class size thing, like it didn't have like any guidance to it. Just you need to have a policy. So we looked at a model that AASB put out and we looked at the current language in, in our policies and did some language updates. But those updates don't change the language that you had in your existing policy, which is that cell phones, are not allowed in class except for the educational and instructional use. Clarified that. I did have a conversation with Mr. Gurley to kind of say, ask especially at Tri-Valley, are we seeing like a problem where there's a lot of kind of conversation sometimes with like either incredible distraction within classes. A lot of, uh, online bullying or conflict with that. And he was saying, hey, I, I don't see that it's this big issue that needs a kind of that big one size fits all type of approach to it. It's interesting. I was talking to a parent this week and they were experiencing the challenge of like their, their child in middle school being the person that they, they don't want them to have a device yet. And seeing their friends having it and kind of they're in that point of like, it'd be easier if everyone would say no, and they're the, the person kind of trying to hold, hold off against the tide in that. And so it is something that I think there'd be, be differences in. But again, kind of from, from our side as a school, at this point, we're saying, we don't see it as a more significant problem that needs a, a stronger type of response on the policy level than what we have.
Tina, I think we're ready to vote on accepting the first reading of board policies and advancing to that to the school board.
Forrest Shreve?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Lauren Bruins?
Yes.
And Dawn Adams?
Yes. Motion passes to advance the set policies to. Moving on to eleven B, out of state travel. Forrest, could you take this?
Just two things. There's one that's just staff and then you guys. Sorry, sorry.
I think we approved the out of state staff travel authorization.
Second. Motion to approve out of state staff travel. It's quite a list.
It's quite a list and, and the intention is not to send that maximum number of people, like specifically looking at like the national conferences. We wanted to list, um, conferences and really actually hoping to be able to focus and see if we can encourage people to attend the National Cultural Teachers of English in the National Council for the, uh, Social Studies Annual Conference. Those are air, kind of content areas that we have not supported in the past. So we wanted to include those. We like the idea of a cohort going, but we also were kind of like, I don't know if people want to go or not. But we thought maybe, and so we wanted to make sure to have kind of like a fallback opportunity. And so we also listed like the, uh, National Council for Mathematics and Science where in reality we'd be prioritizing like those other two and not sending for that. Um, and so this is looking again at maximum numbers for that and we would not send all of those. A lot of these are also, uh, with grant funding that helps support some of those travel, um, one of the events that, um, probably reads very much as like, hmm, that one, up to one staff member to the superintendent of the year forum. You might know who that is and the vast majority of those expenses are actually paid by the National Superintendent's Association and Alaska Superintendent's Association. And I would hope not to be, not to have any need to attend the, uh, job fair in Vancouver.
I think my only just, I think I always just had need to bring this up just to, cause it's so, it's sometimes a parent concern that I hear is, is, is it different teachers or is like same teachers leaving for free conferences or something like that? And I've had some teachers, I mean, that some parents have. So I love the, the teacher development. That's very important to us as a board. I just want to make sure that, you know, that's when you spread out, we don't have one teacher dock in their classroom or a lot of, a lot of these opportunities.
And it's something that actually kind of taught myself that I have to pay attention to. And I'll tell the story that a couple of years ago, I was looking at, uh, patterns of, of staff attendance. And at one point I was like, why is this person gone so much? And then I looked at it, cause Dan, you approved and sent them to three different like conferences, each one taking like them away from the classroom for like four days at a time. That was a big impact to instruction for those kids. And so it's something that we look at and we track. And sometimes it's like, hey, I'm sorry, can't send you on, on that conference because we've got this other thing going. You've missed for this and this, we need to try to preserve that instruction. So it is something that we, we look at and, and make some decisions on. Still might, people still might say it's too much or my, my, my child's teacher's gone too much. But I will assure you that is information that we look at and consider when we do the approvals. Both for these and for the in-state conferences and events too.
We're ready to vote. So motion is to approve the out of state staff travel and authorize those because I'm, Tina, could you take a roll call vote please?
Yes. Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Lauren Bruins?
Yes.
Forrest Shreve?
Yes.
And Dawn Adams?
Yes. Motion passes. Next motion, Kristen, could you take this?
I move to tentatively approve the out of state educational travel authorization for a Tri-Valley educational trip to the Philippines in the spring of twenty twenty six with full approval to be considered with follow-up presentation on details of the trips. Educational design and outcomes at the December board meeting.
There a second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve, tentatively approve the out of state. Just for the Philippines, spring twenty twenty six. With the follow-up. I think we're ready for a presentation.
Yeah. And if the presentation convinces you that you don't need the follow-up, then you can amend your motion.
I will say that given that we have three members of our seven member board that aren't here. I would hesitate to recommend that we prove out of hand. I'm going to question this. Could you share your screen with the slide?
I will.
Where'd you like us?
Where, wherever you wish.
What a small conversation.
Yeah.
This is fun.
Well, I do have to say when, um, because, you know, we had the kids present on their trip from last year, we hadn't quite gotten to like, okay, we're going to present too. Like so, um, when I heard them talking to you guys affair about last spring and as we were starting to embark on this huge enormous expedition overseas, um, and feeling the pressures of all the different aspects of it, um, hearing them talk about that trip, I, it kind of reinvigorated me. And I was like, oh, right. All right. Okay. Um, so we want to share what we have, um, with you. Um, and our guiding question is how are two places on opposite sides of the ring of fire culturally, historically and geographically connected? Um, and on the next slide, just to give you a visual of what we're looking at there, ring of fire, us, Philippines. So looking at the connections that can be drawn across the ocean. Um, next slide, please.
Why the Philippines? We've been asked that a few times. I'll just start by saying it, it, this will be an incredible transformative experience for our students. This expedition directly supports our mission, UBSD mission. We will be engaging with local citizens, engaging in their communities, engaging in their science, in history, engaging in their culture. This will allow our students to take part in extremely meaningful, um, interactions. They will gain insights into a lot of diverse perspectives throughout this expedition. Lifestyles, um, and they'll, they'll recognize, I guess, the, the shared humanity that connects us all. This experience will empower them. This experience will inspire our students to think critically about, um, is their own values and beliefs. And I, and I can say that because, um, I've been there before with students. Uh, and a few years ago, I was on another amazing intensive, uh, in the DC area with our students. And during that experience, we met up with a young man who almost fifteen years prior was a student of mine in Anderson. And he was on my first expedition to the Philippines. He is now a husband, a father and a Fairfax County Deputy Sheriff. And he was reflecting on his experience, I think sixteen years prior at that point. And he, he said, you know, coach, he said, I, I can't, particularly back from Philippines, I can't have a bad day. Cause I can wake up and think I'm gonna have a bad day, but I truly cannot have a bad day. And he talked about that, that permanent impression. We had a service learning project where we were in the back streets, back of like of Barakai Island, like the poorest section of that island. They were building a school. And it was smaller than this area here and it was brick. And, um, he talked about that impression and about working with the poorest people. He clarified it by saying the poorest people by our standards, but the happiest people I've ever met around. He said, you know, there was something so pure about those villagers and it changed him forever. And if you can imagine as a Fairfax County. And if you can imagine as a Fairfax County Deputy Sheriff, he's got a bad days, right? He's like, no, I just cannot. I've impacted my life so much. So with that said, this experience will be impactful. And it will change the lives of our students.
Next slide, please.
I'm Dave Romain. It's nice to meet you. Like I'm sure I've met some of you. As a side note, you did a wonderful thing by it, by by proving me to work here, you know, thank you very much. I have not had a chance to say that to you and I I really do appreciate it. I have had nothing but joy for the last month. Here in Healy. So with that out of the way, we have Filipino staff members on our staff currently that their connections in the country are vital to what we have planned, what we hope to do. Family members and friends in the Philippines that we are connecting with already who give us that Healy Philippines connection face to face with people that we work with there in the day. Daryl, as he has mentioned, has been there. So I think of those first two bullets as safety, security, expertise, knowledge. We're not taking a vacation to the Philippines. We're going in a connection between Healy, Alaska, and the Philippines that has ripple effects throughout our staff, throughout our students and among experts who have been there. So I think it's to me, that's just it's it's is very exciting. I've taken students many times to Washington DC. And it is life-changing. Travel is life-changing. It's something different when it's the people that you work with who have that connection with you. I just got back University of Anchorage, Alaska, University of Alaska Anchorage. The connections we made with each other on bus, the connections we made with each other walking around the campus, the connections we made with each other on staff, who are people that I'm really getting to know and enjoy and appreciate very much. And then, not only that, but local people that we'll meet now overseas who will be oftentimes lifelong friends. I love it. So I think there's a lot to say impact-wise of staff and student connections.
Previous slide, please. Thanks. I'll speak to the last little point on that. So when the idea of the Philippines was brought up, I started doing some research because I'm teaching chemistry this year and I have an ocean certification unit that I've taught a few times before, very rich. And so I was looking, I was like, well, the Philippines, I think of ocean when I go there, when I when I not have been, when I think about the Philippine, I think about the ocean. And so I wanted to know like what's there and what kind of connections can we make with this ocean certification unit? What I found, I was super impressed. They there's the Palawan Biosphere and it's there, they call it the Philippines' largest ecological frontier and over the years, they have been restoring it because of many different aspects of it, but restoring the reefs and the fishing. And so with that connection and our coastline and our oceans here and our seafood industry, I thought it would be an interesting connection to make. And there's lots of like the, I have it out here, Subai Environmental Foundation is one of those that hopefully I'm hoping to work with if we go in order to create some fieldwork experiences for these kids. And anyways, to make the connections between what they have is like the poster child of like reef and ocean restoration over there and like half the bad connect here are fishing for the street as well. So I was just, I guess I wanted to say like, I was wowed when I did some research and so why Philippines? Well, I was supposed it's like one of the poster childs of some restoration. Two slides. Thank you. So as far as expedition, we have three areas of focus, cultural diversity, historical context, and ocean certification. I think we reached and speak a little bit of those.
So the next slide would be excited about this. The history of Alaska, the history of the United States, and the history of the Philippines actually have a lot in common. It doesn't need to even be that direct. We are humans and humans have connections and commonalities. This story, this book by Hampton Sides, who's a a very good and wonderful writer, really dives deep in his subject matter, Ghost Soldiers. World War Two, the history of World War Two in Alaska, the history of is not in the book, but we can study that. We can study how the connections are soldiers, life, occupation, fear, death. I mean, it's all in there, soldier stories, memorials. So every day while we're in country, it's going to be so much history, literature, connection to be made. Again, I think we reinforce a lot. We're not going on a student's trip or doing a study tour. Class will take place. We will be in school. You will not be missing social studies and 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 language arts and you will be learning intensively every day. And then, of course, our job, of course, is to connect it to the students. So when you connect it to the students, how does that affect your school, your state, your country, who you are, who we've become and and Alaska, it's on learning and loving. The connection between Alaska experience and Philippine experience remarkably have a lot that we can pull from. So I'm gonna, Dave touched on some of the historical connections and so what is historically, you know, significant in the Philippines? What is that connection? It's such a strong connection that I I really see this trip as a a pilgrimage of remembrance. A very poignant pilgrimage of remembrance. It represents the sacrifice of tens of thousands of Americans who paid the ultimate price while serving our nation. This journey will allow our students to to honor and reflect on that bravery and dedication of those who who are buried in the Philippines. This experience, I believe, will foster a deep respect for the past and really highlight the importance of I guess, understanding our shared history. It's 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 incredible shared history that's kind of lost in our history books. Ultimately, I think this trip will, I guess, not only enrich our students' educational journey, but also instill a sense of gratitude and responsibility as they learn about the sacrifices made for their freedom. Some of the key historical sites we will visit. The American Cemetery Memorial in Manila. So this is this is sacred ground, guys. It's the final resting place for over seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand US Armed Services partners in World War Two. The site also features a a memorial wall that lists the names of over thirty-six thousand, thirty-six thousand individuals, Americans still missing in action. That's fifty-three thousand Americans between that cemetery, between in unknown graves in the jungles of the Philippines, along the town that that march. And, you know, buried in those those horrible POW camps. Fifty-three thousand Americans are in the soil there. It truly is a a pilgrimage of remembrance. I mean, some of you may be up into Normandy. And that's you just walk up there and that's nine thousand graves. That's nine thousand. Okay, this is seventeen thousand, fifty-three thousand total. Parigador was a strategic defense position during the war. It's located off that it's an island off the tip of the town of the town peninsula. This is the island where MacArthur left the Philippines in the middle of the night. Left his troops. You cannot, we just cannot imagine the deep emotions felt by those American soldiers who were literally event. Tens of thousands of them. It was a dark, dark time in our history. And you know, it's those times that we can learn so much from. And it will touch, it touch, I imagine, think about it. And I've been there and it's just like, oh, you just feel that pain. We'll read, you know, poems and songs written by those soldiers. Many of them did not survive because they were on the the baton death march. You know, they when when we surrendered, we go to the site that commemorates that. That's that journey by American and Filipino soldiers who lost their lives due to horrible conditions, right? So, you know, we're going to learn about the sacrifices made, struggles faced by those abandoned by that tragic event. I guess it just really fosters just a greater appreciation for the complexities in history. The last one really tied to her book, The Cabanatuan, it's a memorial shrine. And it honors a prison camp, Cabanatuan, where an estimated seven thousand soldiers lost their lives due to horrific conditions. As as you may know, a lot of these prisoner of war camps were liquidated prior to Americans coming back. This one, there's a special story there, but we will stand on soil where soldiers dug their own graves. And now they're points, they'll remain. So we're, you know, we're standing on soil where unnamed heroes, unnamed heroes took their final breath, just grasping for that one final day and hoping for the rescue. This site is significant because of the brutal treatment of prisoners, but I think more so the rescue operation known as the Great Raid. I encourage you to watch the the movie. We are going to read the book Ghost Soldiers, which is a true story, just have a true story. It's a book that covers Baton. It covers Cabanatuan and it covers the greatest rescue mission in American history. In summary, I think I already said this this trip will transform our students. But also provides unprecedented, unique experience that will connect them to history in a profound way.
Say a little bit more about the chemistry. Oysters. Anyways, I this is kind of an outline of the unit. And so we start out with a a launch of breeding and watching oyster farmers of West Coast in a few different spots. And we're talking about their farms and how things changed over over time and what is happening to the oysters. So it kind of brings up these questions and then you know, it's kind of formatted where the kids ask a bunch of questions and then we pull some other questions and start like researching and answering the questions slowly. And so basically, like the first big thing is like, how does carbon dioxide create acidic water? And so we talk about what an acid is and the the chemical formulas for how that happens in water. And then another question that usually comes up is, well, how do oysters make their shells? And so we learn the chemistry of the shell formation process. And that will apply to the reefs and other shellfish as well, not just oysters. But and then usually that brings up questions about, well, is it the same as the pH of the ocean the same everywhere? And we talk about upwelling and we talk about equilibrium and and why ocean isn't super acidic. And yeah, so that's kind of the the chemistry outline.
If you like pearls, your children will come home.
Yeah, next slide, please. And then I have some fieldwork ideas that if we get approval, then I will pursue even further. I already have some emails out, but but we work with the Alaska Sea Life Center and or the Alaska Ocean Certification Network in order to find some scientists to work with and that is we can work with take somehow. And the Philippines, there's Palawan State University that our connections over there can hopefully help us find some scientists to work with. And like I mentioned before, there's the environmental foundations and the protected marine protected areas that we go use as like a research point. If not, we hopefully take some data that we could compare to. So we'll see. As we go forward.
It's a little easier to get an ocean there than this last one.
Next slide. So I guess we're we're trying to do this early because we if we get a foodie, we need fast works and lots of fun to do. And the work I can field work kind of like what I said and booking flights and watching early. So thank you for considering approving and we'd love any questions.
I have lots. Do you want to do lots? Do you have any?
I have one. I have one question. You guys talked about a lot of really sounds like really relevant information. Does it sound a little heavy? Is there any fun? Is there any fun to this trip?
Yeah, I'm sure we have more.
You're managing the Philippines just just it's the most beautiful place on earth with beautiful people. As we know, we have a few here. It's just an amazing place.
We don't go places where they're ugly.
We have heard of food courts that are a blast. We have heard of parks. There's there's swimming, there's there's going to be a very rich, enjoyable time.
And in kind of some general general answer and maybe defense of the teachers for like not emphasizing the fun as we've also emphasized to them and to others that like if you sell it as a vacation, you can do that in June. Like it's like
Like the word watch about the roller coaster is like
On Engineering Day. On Engineering Day.
And it's easier to get in the water. The last time is I did get several students certified, school certified, obviously something that happened that, you know, we talked about. But that's something that they could come back with possibly with personal parents and whatnot. That's everywhere. I mean, our kids were diving on old World War Two Jackie ships. It was really cool. There's 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 lots of opportunities like that.
Okay, are we teaching world history this year? Is that what are we in world 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 history mode this year or no?
We are in world history mode next semester.
Perfect. I guess what I would like to see that maybe you don't know yet, maybe when it gets to November, when we have a a different presentation. I would love to see the cost that's associated with that.
We do. We 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 do have a a pretty good idea of what it's going to cost. We have been in contact with some folks that Maria has a lot of like high-end connections in the Philippines, just so you know. CEOs and all kinds of stuff, but we have, we do have, I think it's a college friend who is now a I don't know, the Barbara Walters of the Philippines, her husband. And they are helping us plan this and they it's looking like, and this is high-end. Costa Rica's forty-five hundred dollars, DC was two thousand. Kind of smack dab in the middle leaning towards more the DC price, like that three thousand dollar mark. Include everything. So about fifteen hundred dollars cheaper than Costa Rica.
So I know in the past trips, there's been fundraising, but the fundraising typically just went to not towards the okay, not towards the students' cost of the three thousand, went more towards like with Costa Rica, it was really tiffin or other things. So parents didn't necessarily see like a price reduction on their trip cost as much as it was just for other items. Is there fundraising ideas that could help those students? Is there fundraising ideas that could help those students possibly offset the cost of the actual three thousand dollar price of the trip?
Yeah, I, I think our first DC trip, we fundraised. And that was spread out for everyone. Uh, last year, we felt like the fundraising was pretty heavy in the, in the local community, in elementary fundraiser and things else, and. That DC trip is very reasonable, because we do. So we thought, wow, we're not gonna do as much, because we just don't wanna burden the community. We do have some plans for this one, um, with approval, obviously, we gotta have a, a, that, that approval to, to move forward with this. But I don't, I see it as we just spread it out. That's kind of, I thought that was policy, but I, I think we have to spread it out, yeah, like. Um, last year, we, we did have some opportunities where. Like a, a business, um, you, you came in Cusworth. You know, a, a business donated, um, I think a thousand dollars to those individuals that do that. I think there'll be some more opportunities like that for those that, you know, need that extra. And that was on their own, kinda. Um, that was not, not necessarily fundraising.
Do you have dates picked up?
And again, that we can solidify dates once we get the thumbs up from you guys. There's a lot going on in the spring, um, and we've already talked to some folks, like, and, uh, so we, we have an idea in, in April. Earliest April.
So actually, like, actually like that.
Yeah, so, but again, we're just kind of waiting. For those lessons.
And then. How many students are you thinking?
So we, we are tying this to, um, two classes for sure, chemistry and language arts. Um, and so it's not a junior season, although that is only juniors and seniors in those classes. But it, it's not gonna be, you have, because it's such a huge part, I think you felt like a little bit of that in the presentation. Earlier, where that background knowledge that, that is so important to make, especially a trip like this, so enriching. Um, so we are tying it to at least two classes, we're talking about another, um, kind of expeditionary class. And not approval, um, right now, I think we have sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Um, and it'll be the same thing, like, three chaperones here. We want to open it up to parents of juniors and seniors, uh, again, um. We budgeted, like, when we sent this to the folks in the Philippines for twenty-four. So the price we got back was for twenty-four, we can hit twenty-four. That, that three thousand dollar mark that I, I said was based off of the seventeen, we hit twenty-four, that comes down. Those parents will pay full price, right? So, um. Yeah.
And so he pays full price, what does that mean?
Well, they, yeah, the, the fundraising doesn't help. Yeah, no, the fundraising does not help, sorry, that's.
How many days?
Uh, we're looking at kind of the same thing we did last year in DC, I'll say that. Uh, the last time I went, it was sixteen days, and it seemed short, but, um, I think we're looking at about nine days, about the same, nine, ten days. About the same. Yeah.
Yeah, that, right?
Yeah, I think, nine days, yeah, yeah. You lose a day going, you gain a day coming back, tattoo. But yeah, it's gonna be too fast, honestly, but, um, just understanding that it isn't. You know, the spring and, um, the class that they're gonna miss is math, and we've kind of talked about who will deal with that, but, um.
I'm gonna look at questions.
Good questions, yeah.
Okay, um, so we, we've seen with, or at least in my tenure with the DC trip and with the Costa Rica trip last couple of years. So there are families who can't, that can't participate in trips for different reasons, and. Um, and they, you, you, you've done a wonderful job of providing meaningful activities for them here, but it does mean that there's this. Environment where other kids are preparing for a trip. And going on trip. So do you, is there, is there a drop off in, in participation by those kids? Like, like, how does it affect the kids that aren't going?
It, it will, and, and we hope that they're, that everyone. So that's, and again, we haven't really broke, I mean, the kids, I don't know what's going on here. But they're, uh, they're, if you're watching online right here, maybe to celebrate, I've been told, but, uh. Um, I, I, our hope is that all of them in these two classes, yeah. Like, we will, we will, uh, have opportunities. Uh, we had some opportunities, uh, financially for those who couldn't last year. We would love for financial not to be, yeah, the reason you don't very, you something. And then we also discussed. If you, the requirement is to read these books, to do these activities, to have the science. Could somebody go who did not have that background, you know? So would there be somebody from, uh, I don't know, Hope School or something, so they're considering that as well, yeah. I think we've kind of decided it's a true, like, happy in there, you have to be expedition. And that was a two, what's gonna make this school special, things like this, you know, I think that. When you're doing something like this, so energy, so life-changing, I think it, it's attractive. I forgot one thing on my slide that I wanted to highlight. It kind of goes to this, and I've taken kids to Washington DC six times. Um, and they can often look at Ginsburg and go, yeah, very nice, or, or look at the decoration, that's great. When you've read, as you saw the, the seniors present, when you've read the book, you've studied the, the document in its original form. And then you see it, boy, that adds power to it. I just have a, we just say kids, Washington DC, and they listen, Chevy Chase is going to the Grand Canyon. We don't want that. We're looking, so I'm excited about the fact that you will have done so much work, and you go and you look at this now, it means something. But yes, the, the background work would have to be there.
And then, um, my other question is just safety, it's a, it's. And, you know, Costa Rica has been a country for people to travel, travel to, we have the benefit of, um. Staff members who can help. Both parents and help. You know, teachers and students understand, you know, traveling safely. Um, are there educational tours that are traveling to Philippines right now?
Uh, especially where we're going in the northern part, you, no one's going in the now, no one's going in the southern part of the Philippines, but the northern part for sure.
It's, um, it's reassuring to know, I didn't realize you had that.
You got this question.
And do you think Don has a good point, that the point that I didn't necessarily, of, you know, are any kids feeling excluded? They, our families based on us or other community? Just, I think we, make sure you're already aware, just making sure we are. Aware, uh, we always talk about equity, equity and, and. Equity and education, I think that's what I worked today, but, um, you know, I just, yeah, that, that is something to, to really consider.
Are, are you meaning like if they're not taking the classes?
No, okay, no, no, like they're taking the classes and engaged in the work, and I think it comes to financial situation.
I don't anticipate that, I, and, and again, if it's a high number, we just don't go, or, you know, we're kind of like. This comes out, like, we're hoping we have a hundred percent. Um, support, you know, there's.
So parents don't necessarily know, I mean, okay.
No, I, no. Uh, I don't, you know, we'll, we'll call a parent meeting next week, or the week after we're formally approved. Um, there's a lot we can't do until we really do have the blessings for events. So, uh, when that happens, we will forward and. Make a judgment there, there is one student that, just to be forthcoming, who we've tried to, and that is Kenobi. Um, and we've sat his mom down, cause she's helped, she's helped me tremendously, she's put hours into this already. Um, and she go, don't worry, he's been in the Philippines, lived there, and, you know, we thought, well, let's do it next year. He will not have the proper card until after he's graduated. Um, so, you know, and then, you know, we had the discussion, just, you know, are you like, oh, what are we gonna do? But if this was a Philippine or a Costa Rica year, which it would be, right? Uh, would that Costa Rica, cause he can't go to Costa Rica, would that be, you know, something that would be canceled because of that, uh, no, but. So he is the one student that we are very like, we're, we're gonna have something. Uh, special for him, not sure what yet, but if this is approved, that would be the only one that I anticipate. Not sure we could afford it, the amount of food he ate. Yeah, yeah. Not so straightforward, since it's.
Yeah, with, with the, I mean, maybe it's more towards Dan than the two, than the three of you, but with the tentative approval, and you did. Don made a good point, that, you know, we have three of our school board members that aren't here tonight, and. With a tentative approval, what does that? What does that, is there a pro, are there pros and cons for tentative approval, is, what, what can they do not do with a tentative? Approval instead of a full approval?
And, and the tentative, and, and I think you would have to think that, like, your tentative is, is like, kind of like, given green light. And my question kind of to the board that I was waiting for was kind of like, okay. In, in this question of like, what, what more would you want from them? Where I look and I go, I might want to see. Bit more presented on like the instructional connection piece, like we heard kind of the. More like, almost like, show me more, like the, a bit more unit design, we saw a, a bit from the, the chemistry unit. And I was kind of curious a little bit more, like, show me more explicitly the connections with, uh, ghost soldiers. Connections with the history, like, just a bit more of that, that unit design. But it's kind of like, what are you guys looking for where, pardon me, goes, okay, I see that, and it's like. We will need to, need, it would need to be flushed out, but the difference between like a tentative approval. Versus full approval now, I'm, like, I'm kind of looking and going like. What, what more do you feel you need to say yes to this, where, I mean, it was clear this is not a vacation trip? So, so happy to see that, seeing.
Have that underlying concern that we talked about, this is tentative suggests go for it. But then that could be changed after we put in hours and hours, hours of work, so tentative sits funny. We're fine with it, but there is an element, we'd like to move forward and make in-depth plans.
Like, in my mind, like, again, I would anticipate, again, uh. Again, knowing your work, going like, okay, well, we're gonna see great work. In like any future presentation, like, see things kind of flesh out a little more, more flesh on the bones. And then I kind of almost like a, unless there's like a big kind of like, you know, like. Switch to like, you know, it's party time in Manila. Or, or like you put stuff to it, and we're like, no, that's like weak, weak design, which I would be shocked. From any one of you to see, it's. It's almost like kind of, I think, maybe affirming to the board the same information that, like, you'll be. Ultimately sharing with, with parents, and just kind of like, hey, that reassurance of like, hey, we're. We are investing this time in this, and like, it's more of like, hey, we're, we're affirming it, where. Yeah, after like the green light of the tentative tonight, it'd be like. It's kind of like, man, you'd, it'd have to be like a real stinker for them to go like, we're pulling a plug on this thing.
Yeah.
I truly am not concerned with the educational aspect of this trip at all, from what we presented. And then what we saw today from, um, the DC trip and other. Um, presentations that I have sat here on the board of trips that have come out of the Dina Boral School District. I truly am not concerned necessarily about that. Um, because I know the three of you will put in an enormous amount of work, and this will be a life-changing experience for the kids. I'm not necessarily concerned about that. Um, I am asking, I'm, I am curious to see feedback. Um, and, and what that looks like, and. Um, is there support from, from that, but, I mean, I'm sure every kid's like, sign me up, I'm over there saying, sign me up. But I'm like, but what, what, what are the parents feeling and thinking, and what is their reaction? And so I guess I think, okay. We, we, we say, we vote yes, we vote no, we, well, let's say we vote yes, we give you that tentative approval, you have that parent meeting. I mean, I get we're not back here till November, but if you've had that meeting, and I guess if you've had that, um. You know, buy-in from everybody, there's no reason why it couldn't go back onto our agenda in October. Where that full, um, approval could be solidified and given based on the feedback. From, from a, from a meeting here in the next thirty days, right? So we meet on the eighteenth of October, I believe, and, um. So I guess I would just wonder if we could have that meeting, flush out some of those things, do we have buy-in? Is there big concerns that are gonna come out in that period of time? That, um, would then make, maybe make you rethink if we're only sweeping off this.
And just, e- even if you guys gave the green light, full green light here. If we have a parent meeting and there are things that we don't feel comfortable with, yeah, we're, we're not moving forward, so. Yeah. Um, and with even a type, we've got to have a parent meeting, so. That's our biggest, our biggest, that's why we're here, and we need to let kids know, parents know. And then we can move forward, we've already put a lot into this, just because we needed to, other to present this, um, and just have things solidified and. Not solidified, but in place, especially over there. Uh, and we do, we've worked with very, uh, network for a couple hours. We met, um, two individuals that will be our local guides the whole time. Uh, pretty much planning that side of the trip, honestly. We're just telling them where we wanna go, and what we're gonna do, and they're, all the transportation, all this, they're gonna. Marie has connections with the CEO of one of the air, airlines, because we have to fly from Manila to Palawan. Um, so we've got some good, good prices there.
Do you have a minimum number where the trip would be a no? Like, like if only five kids can go, then it's.
I, I think.
If it's ten kids, is it, like, where's, where's that minimum number where if you can't get enough kids, that it doesn't become.
You know, we've talked about it. It's, oh, okay. I feel like we should have parent meeting first, and then, depending on numbers, and we go, there's no.
Honestly. Mister Pulte, I, when I think of putting the meat on the bones, I get terribly excited about that. So I'm. Hopeful that we can get a green light so that I can, that's something.
Yeah, a- a- another structural approach that you could take as a board would be to just amend your motion to full approval and require an up, like a November update. Would be another way of doing it, and, and, and again, if it's a stinker. Well, they can do an amendment to the agenda and like, you know, revoke it, would be another approach to take for it. Um, especially when I, and I, and I kind of think about that when I saw. Uh, uh, three of you, I wasn't quite sure if I saw Forrest nodding or not, on feeling like kind of affirmed on the educational side of the, the experience. So seeing that, I go, okay, so you are a quorum on the board, you're in agreement of that, even if the other three members disagreed, well, you'd have a conversation about it. You're fully empowered to, to make, make that decision, and you'd still be able to say. Yeah, and because it's a significant personal expense of families, it's a significant commitment of, of school time and resources. That, yeah, we, we, we wanna, we wanna kind of that update, just to affirm the, the high instructional rigor.
I don't, I don't see. What could change in the, the next meeting? That would, would cause my feelings to change, uh, about a parent meeting, there's some concern and stuff. I just, and exactly what you guys said, you would have to consider. Half of them feel like maybe this isn't a safe place for their kids, and they don't go there. I, I would assume that would come back, and, and maybe have a different proposal. Uh, but I don't see what the concern would be between going to Costa Rica and there when it comes to the finances or inclusion, or any of those pieces or education. Pieces, so I. I would be willing to, to change the motion, but, uh. If it required all of us to vote yes right now, I don't think we're gonna do it.
And I can see the benefit of, of earlier than later, you know, for some families, a payment plan option, like, it's better than. You know, a million thousand dollars now, and you know, that, that can be financially burdensome to some parents, and so. You know, the, the sooner, and so I appreciate the, the. I already, I already said, I filled my ears, fine, but I guess I didn't, but I do at least appreciate coming early. Out of respect for people's financial situations and trying to afford a trip.
And, and that's basically where I'm coming from in, uh, being willing to change motion, uh, cause. Yeah, I was one of the kids that, that. Yeah, I was one of the kids that that stayed behind and it it really doesn't bother me. We all have different experiences in life and that's okay. But the financial piece was not one that I was able to meet and go on that trip. And, you know, the longer that people have time, maybe the more ability they have to change the way that. They're living their life or spending money for the first part of winter. Save them or something.
To clarify, that wasn't the full future.
That was not a full. No, but so that that would be my biggest concern is trying to just make sure that that. But. See. You guys are interested in doing.
Moderating opportunities too, we talk about, you know, some of the opportunities are now. Like right now, Catkins up in my, Oland, some of those. Good opportunities. And it's a short window, it's literally three weeks, you know.
Yeah.
I would add a change of motion.
Oh.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion by removing tentatively and. Change it to with full approval to be considered.
And with removing both of those.
Oh, I apologize. And then the motion by removing tentatively and with full approval to be considered.
So it's second. So we're gonna vote on amending the emotion, the motion. By removing the word tentatively and removing the phrase with full approval to be considered. So the amended motion will read, I move to approve the out of state educational travel authorization for a Tri Valley educational trip to the Philippines in spring of twenty twenty six. With follow up presentation on the details of trips, educational design outcomes, the members will work. Does anyone like to discuss? Tina, could you take a roll call vote on the amendment to the motion?
Yes. Forrest Shreve.
Yes.
Kristen Randall.
Yes.
Lauren Bruins.
Yes.
And Dawn Adams.
Yes. The amendment passes, the motion is amended. So we're ready to vote on the, yes. So we're voting to approve the out of state educational travel authorization. With the presentation when we return to Tri Valley November. Okay, Tina, roll call please.
Forrest Shreve.
Yes.
Lauren Bruins.
Yes.
Kristen Randall. And Dawn Adams.
Yes. Motion passes. Blake, Tim, the fourth and Irma.
We look forward to all the exciting details in November.
With that is one, thanks for hiring me.
It's been a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys.
First, we'll take the next.
I move to approve the travel for all board members, register school board candidates and student representatives to the board. To attend the AASB Annual Conference in Anchorage, November fifteenth through sixteenth.
Second. Move them second to to approve the travel to the AASM.
I would point out kind of language on authorizing like registered candidates. It allows someone who's gone through the process, has a name on the ballot to be able to come to that conference with us. No one other than sitting board members are registered. But I want to mention that just in terms of, I think it's something that helps educate potential members onto the board. So just kind of like again, in the future, just kind of keep looking for that language, because I think it can be important thing for just boards. Kind of stability competence skill level when there are transitions.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve your travel. So question. Tina, could you take a roll call?
Kristen Randall.
Yes.
Lauren Bruins.
Yes.
Forrest Shreve.
Yes.
And Dawn Adams.
Motion passes. Any public comments? Comments from the board superintendent, but then you're left to start.
Sure, I'll start. Thanks for a good meeting. I feel like we got a lot accomplished and that was important to thank the kids. For that presentation, I do appreciate that I did hear, I did hear, got to hear some of it in spring. That was very well done as well, and I'm always grateful for that follow up, that follow up piece helps us. As a board to hear their their learning experiences and that that that's important. And and really, that's great. I'm great. I get get, I'm so glad I get to work with all all these great people on the school board. Lauren.
Thanks. Yeah, it was it was great to spend time with the the data. To start off, as we're working on our goals. And just, yeah, it's interesting actually looking at the data and then you're like. Oh, that's that's what that is, that's where we're at. Oh, okay. There's always, it's just such a great learning opportunity for for me. And then, yes, big thanks to the kids for that presentation. That was so well thought out. It was great to see kind of their. Their heart put into that of of how they really felt about the trip. And how great, that picture is so wonderful. I think that's a really great picture and that'll be framed somewhere. And yeah, I like the, I like the new setup we had going on, the conversational setup. It was enjoyable. Yeah, all right, Forrest.
Yeah. Thanks for putting the numbers together, Dan, for the for the work session at the beginning. I was intrigued, numbers and stuff to go for. Selfful. The presentation on the DC trip, those kids respond. Makes me, you know, wanting to go to these places when I when I see them come back and talk excitedly about it. That's that's awesome. I'm glad we're able to. Let them start planning for the Philippines and and definitely I'm excited to see what they plan out for November and. Hopefully get some good. Plans for that that we get to see. I was also pretty happy to see that Makai was able to go on the DC trip having a little bit of flexibility and and. You know, homeschool student be able to travel with and and participate and still get some of those same experiences, even though they're not necessarily sitting in the same classroom. I think that's pretty cool. And just bring up a couple of small things that are a couple of items that that have been brought up to me. And I'll be urging people to continue that give public comment, but things that are, I think are worth note. I, PE teacher, yes, I hadn't really realized that we don't.
Is this a PE teacher here? All my years growing up, we did, so I didn't, I never even thought about it, but that's something that is interesting. And then give thanks as it's brought up to me by multiple people, not these. But multiple people, Darryl Crisby and Roger Stafford put in a lot of time on the soccer field at the end of the year. So I wanted to give a thanks to them and. Yeah, I'm I'm interested, I guess, hopefully. Talk to Callie and learn a little bit more about how the school lunches are going. It's it's going well, but you know, maybe get a report back in the future. Once the season's over and they start. The summer season's over, they're able to kind of roll into what what looks like normal through the winter. It'll be interesting. See how it's going. And I think that's it.
Great, well, thanks. I can't help but feel like our school board members are starting a great meeting. I actually did see Jenna yesterday or two days ago before she left for for Seattle. Make sure you look at the agenda now, but there's lots of files to look at and there's data and like, don't wait till the next meeting to catch up on this one. Because there was so much and and yeah, it's great. Thanks for for just geeking out on the the data. When parents put together a great, great picture of how things are going. At at Tri Valley and the the school district, a great presentation, but so I appreciate seeing them. In more of a formal situation than what it is. And I look forward to success with the next. With this next Philippines trip and planning for that. Thanks for the creating this opportunity here in the school with the kids that are participating and thanks for the open house. And I think it'll, if consistency is, if of anything, is probably the best thing for for creating just that opportunity for people to interact at the school. And I was very excited to have somebody come to me and ask about being a substitute at school. So I had to pass that on too. The cool things, good start to school. Thanks all. Appreciate working with you too.
Working together to nurture, empower and inspire today's student to positively shape tomorrow's world. It's interesting. Mr. Gurley and I, along with Terry and Jamie, two new administrators, are in a classroom today. Doing an observation to ground ourselves in an observation to kind of make sure that, hey, we're looking for same things in terms of like the. Kind of qualitative aspects that we look at along this kind of complex rubric that we're we're all pretty. Pretty close to each other, that we're not wildly different in that. And it was interesting talking to to one of them afterwards, and they were talking about their experiences like in other places. And they're like, I kind of have to keep reminding myself. Where like I would have been falling down a May, like just, oh, my God, if anything like this was happening in any of the other schools. Because it was an elementary class, it had like full of of student talk about the the academics, about the lessons, students talking to students. A lot of protocol use so that it was like, every student is talking and is engaged, it's structured, it's organized. There's this rich environment, so many like positive things are going on. They're like. I have to remind myself. Almost that this is the norm. That this is like the expectation that like can be met on a regular basis and like more of like, when I don't see this. I need to go, hey, let's talk about this, as opposed to like if in other places that they'd worked, if it was, if they ever saw it, it'd be like. Are you okay? Like, like, it's so different because it would be so kind of in a traditional view of. Everybody be quiet, everybody listen to me, everybody answer the same question. Read this, just very rote, very kind of like basic instructional. It really reminded me of the. Work that we've done over the decade. And also the work that and the kind of places that the teachers themselves bring in here. Because you have teachers and you saw three of them today wanting to engage in this this style of work. And there are teachers that are doing that each and every day, even with that type of rich design that you heard. They've talked about excite, getting being excited, put like that flesh on the bones. Those are. That's the type of work that the teachers are doing kind of constantly and throughout our our schools. And that is something that while it's not unique to us in terms of the just rich educational experiences. I'd also say it's not ubiquitous across the state. And sometimes we might. Forget that, that we get used to what we see. And we think that other people have that same experience. And when we take a chance and actually look at that data that can ground us kind of outside of our own experience. While we can look and we can continue to see that, hey, we've still got some challenges, we've got room to grow. It also reminds us and puts us into a position of going like, and there are things that we do here. And gifts that we have here with our kids. That are not found in many places around the state, whether that's many communities, many schools, many classrooms. And here it really is a far more common experience. Throughout their entire educational. Experience here. And again, the end of like that that collective and additive outcome of that. Day after day, week after week, month after month, year after year, and recognizing that the the great position that we put our students in. Is something that's just really, really continually just very proud to be a part of, that kind of that little piece that like. Times it's like I. Try to take credit for like the whole system and it's like, I don't haven't haven't taught a kid in a class in a long, long time. But it really makes me excited when I go into a classroom like I did today. And I see a teacher teaching with excitement and I see kids in that classroom learning with that same excitement.